Make us have more data. I want to note that the new MMR, which was released yesterday, that's the mayor's manager report, for those who don't know these crazy initials, has no data on cannabis enforcement whatsoever. Finally, I want to thank the following people for their work on this hearing, for an excellent briefing paper, and for their support of my campaign and all of us against illegal cannabis stores citywide, which began 23 months ago. From the Oversight and Investigations Committee, Nicole Kata, Eric Cohen, and Alex Yablón. From Oversight and Investigations Division, Aaron Mendelson, Meg Powers, Kevin Frick, Zachary Mayer, Katie Sinis, Yuzair Qadar, Amice Radif, and Brian Parcon. And from my office, the very major Sam Goldsmith, who has been dubbed by The New York Times "de facto cannabis czar," after we closed Zaza Waza with the help of the sheriff on Columbus Avenue. And now I'd like to turn it over to my fabulous, our fabulous, Justin Brennan, Chair of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Chair Brewer. Also note, we've been joined by Councilmember Brooks Powers and Councilmember Salam. I'm Councilmember Brennan. I have the privilege of chairing the Committee on Finance, and I want to thank Chair Brewer for her dedication to putting this hearing together. We worked long and hard in convening this, and appreciate her efforts in bringing us all here today. Also, of course, want to welcome the sheriff, and thank you for all your work in the enforcement efforts against our unlicensed cannabis shops. Three years ago, the state legalized the adult use of cannabis, taking a large step toward recognizing and reversing harms inflicted by the country's war on drugs era policies. A key piece of this was not just to authorize licensed retail sale of cannabis, but to direct the first licenses to people who personally or their families had a marijuana-related criminal conviction, and to earmark a percentage of those tax revenue generated for programs and communities that were hardest hit by those war on drugs era policies. But the state stumbled badly in implementing this landmark change in our laws, and the glacial pace of bureaucracy threatens to now criminalize what we've legalized. Over a year has passed since recreational adult-use marijuana was legalized, but we're still waiting on licenses. This delay has resulted in a gray area free-for-all where bad-faith actors rushed in to operate unlicensed cannabis shops and sell untaxed and dangerous products. Clear responsibilities and tools for enforcement against these illegal shops were lacking, causing frustrations to grow in all of our neighborhoods and communities. The end result has been a wave of bad-faith operators draining potential tax revenue away from the city and state, and effectively blocking opportunities that the state legislature intended to ensure went first to those most affected by prior criminalization of marijuana. Back in April, the state took a step forward to finally clean up enforcement responsibilities, explicitly authorizing the New York City Sheriff's Office to seal unlicensed shops and shut down those businesses. And we want to thank Sheriff Miranda and your team for really hitting the ground running. Once the state finally handed over those responsibilities, you wasted no time, and that has not gone unnoticed in our communities. And while authorities have been active in padlocking these shops, I do want to take time to point out that this is a problem that can and should still be attacked from two sides. We need to get more legal licenses out the door, because the sooner the legal dispensaries are established, the easier it will be to shut down the unlicensed businesses. So I call on our partners in the state to continue working towards speeding up issuing authorized retail licenses and to allow the illegal shops to get up and running, not only to deny room for these bad-faith actors, but to fulfill the policy goals behind legalization law in the first place. We need to avoid what happened in California. Some seven years after legalizing recreational marijuana, the black market has now eclipsed the regulated and taxed marketplace, effectively undermining the legal industry entirely. Unless we get these new licenses out the door as soon as possible and get serious about the illegal weed shops that continue to masquerade as legitimate dispensaries, these new retail licenses will effectively be worthless, and tax revenue will be a far cry from what we were promised and what we anticipate. So today, my questions will speak to the head count and other budgetary resources used for the enforcement efforts, the count and cost of these unlicensed shops continuing to operate, and more. Thanks, Sheriff Miranda, again, and his team for joining us today at this hearing, and I look forward to hearing from you on these issues. Quickly, before we begin, I want to thank my finance team, Senior Analyst Michael Sherman, Committee Counsel Mike Toomey, my Senior Advisor John Yedden, and the entire staff from the Committee on Oversight and Investigation for all their hard work behind the scenes putting this hearing together. With that, I'll turn it back over to Chair Brewer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You should see that there are slides up on the display, and I just want you to know that the first chart shows the difference between the number of unlicensed cannabis stores sealed and the number of unlicensed cannabis stores estimated to exist by the sheriff, and the difference, according to us, is approximately 2,600. The second chart shows that just 3% of summonses issued by the sheriff and upheld by the Office of Administrative Trials and Hearings, also known as OOF, have been paid, leaving 97% unpaid. It's not a great, large screen, so I want to be able to tell you what it is, and I'll turn it over to the counsel.
Thank you, Chair Brewer. We will now hear testimony from the administration. Before we begin, I will administer the affirmation. We will hear from Sheriff Miranda, First Deputy Sheriff Warren Glover, and Lieutenant Francesca Rosa. Panelists, please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee, and to respond honestly to councilmember questions? Thank you. You may begin when ready.
Sheriff, just make sure your mic's on.
How we doing? Is that better? Okay. Sorry about that. Good morning, Chair Brewer and Chair Brennan, and good morning to all the councilmembers here today, and those that are online as well. On behalf of the New York City Sheriff's Office, we are excited to be here to discuss such an important initiative for Mayor Adams and the entire administration. My name is Anthony Miranda, and I am privileged to be serving as the sheriff for New York City. As the sheriff, I have been granted authority to lead a comprehensive, multi-agency operation to padlock illegal smoke shops and unlicensed cannabis dispensaries across the five boroughs. In April of 2024, the state granted cannabis enforcement authority explicitly to the sheriff's office and to any agency designated by the sheriff's office, which includes the Department of Consumer and Worker Protection and the New York City Police Department. This authority permits the sheriff's office to inspect these unlicensed locations and to issue civil summonses to smoke shops that are selling cannabis without the appropriate issued license. The sheriff's office has also authorized to padlock locations on the first visits when they are determined to be an imminent threat to health, safety, and the welfare of our communities. We are also able to padlock locations that are repeatedly found to be selling cannabis illegally. As of September 11, 2024, in just a little over four months, the operation has conducted over 5,059 inspections. We have inspected 95% of the reported 3,803 locations. 169 locations were recently reported to 311. That's why we're no longer at 100%. The sheriff's Joint Compliance Task Force has sealed 1,078 locations, seized over $67 million in illicit products, and issued over $104 million in civil penalties. For months, New Yorkers have seen and heard our efforts, but today, I would like to take the council through the operational demands of countering the spread of the illegal stores. In the beginning of May, with an estimated 2,800 illegal smoke shops in operation, the city had to strategically inspect any store that was considered an imminent threat to the health and safety of the community. As such, the sheriff's office prioritized inspecting smoke shops that sold unlicensed cannabis that had resulted in adults or children experiencing sickness, smoke shops that were identified as selling or targeting minors, and smoke shops that were within 1,000 feet of a public youth facility, school, or house of worship. Teams of five to seven personnel, including deputy sheriffs, DCWP inspectors, and the NYPD, are strategically deployed to neighborhoods across the five boroughs. To maximize resources, these teams will inspect illegal smoke shops or unlicensed cannabis dispensaries operating in proximity of each other. This enforcement tactic allows our operations to conduct as many as 60 inspections within a single day. With each inspection, our deputy sheriff, sheriff investigating, and DCWP inspectors write and issue all relevant violations, such as unlicensed sale of cannabis and possession of flavored tobacco products. The inspecting officers then conduct an inventory process of all illegal products, or separated by category. The bags, and I have to explain what the bags are. The bags are weigh approximately 30 to 40 pounds each, so I think there was some misinterpretation when other people read that they were smaller bags. We're talking about large bags that can hold about 30 or 40 pounds of product. We weigh the product, and we seal the evidence at the location. Illegal products include anything from cigarettes to cannabis in flavored form, and if imminent threat factors observed, the officers will padlock the store. The largest number of illegal unlicensed products removed from one location was 29 pallets. This summarizes the inspection process. After the inspection, for the locations that are padlocked, the respondents, who are the store owners, are entitled to a hearing before oath within five business days of the issuance of any civil summonses for unlicensed cannabis sales. At this hearing, the respondent can challenge the sealing of the store. Once the hearing has been held, the oath hearing officer will render a decision on the civil summons and issue a recommendation regarding whether the store should remain closed. Within four business days of receiving the hearing officer's recommendation, the sheriff's office will issue a final decision on whether this store will remain sealed or will be permitted to reopen, based on a careful review of the hearing record. If the sheriff's office determines that the store will remain sealed, the store is then monitored by both the sheriff's office and the NYPD to continually monitor the location and ensure compliance with the law. Many of you may be wondering what happens if a store cuts the padlock once the sheriff's office has decided that they should remain closed? And it's a great question. This is illegal, and it is potentially a prosecutable offense, because the owner would be defying a legal order. On the rare occasions when this does occur, we have teams conduct re-inspections as soon as possible. If we find that a padlock has been broken, we go back in immediately to determine if additional illegal activity has taken place within the location, and we reseal the store. I would also like to address a common concern about the fine collection. Our primary objective for this operation is to shut these businesses down, not to raise the revenue. The increased fines are meant as a deterrent. By and large, shops that are padlocked go out of business, and it is very difficult to collect fines from often untraceable LLCs that are no longer in operation. For LLCs that have stayed in business, it may take up to 120 days for fines to be turned into collectible judgments, as at this time, no fines issued have reached this benchmark. Our goal is not just to inspect unlicensed stores and take appropriate action, but to restore the community's quality of life. This administration wants a legally operating business to be able to take over the commercial space as soon as possible, to not only allow, not only help the landlord, but also improve the neighborhood and support local small businesses. Currently, 274 locations are vacant, 141 locations have changed businesses, and 116 locations were released back to the landlord who have completed the abatement process. Operation Padlock to Protect has been able to shut down illegal shops and unlicensed cannabis dispensary in every city council district. On a weekly basis, we are inspecting hundreds of locations. This is only the beginning. The operation will continue to change and expand as the industry continues to evolve. This will ensure that the health and safety of our community are protected. As many of you are aware, these illegal shops are promoting products that are targeting children, especially high schoolers. The illegal smoke shops sell cannabis in packages displaying popular cartoon characters or packages resembling snacks and candy, which are examples here in front of you now. It is imperative that we do everything we can to protect young New Yorkers and remove harmful products from the streets. There are no quality control regulations on the unlicensed product seized during our inspections, and they can include any number of harmful chemicals, toxins, trace amounts of other illegal substances. In our inspections, we have recovered firearms, such as shotguns, 9mm, 40 caliber, and other weapons, such as swords, machetes, brass knuckles, mace, and other weapons. We have also recovered narcotics, controlled substances such as psilocybin, the mushrooms, cocaine, crack, heroin, MDMA, fentanyl, and ketamine, to name a few. The gravity of the work before us cannot be overstated, which is why I am so thankful for the council's partnership. Many of you have joined our teams on ride-alongs or inspection operations, which I believe has been incredibly helpful. For any councilmember here today or online who have not yet participated in the ride-along, please reach out to our office, and we'd love to set up a time for you to join us. This effort needs to be an all-in approach by the entire city. For the community members listening, you are a crucial part of this effort. It is thanks to your partnership that we've had much success. And to all the members of the public, if you see an illegal smoke shop or unlicensed cannabis dispensary operating in your community, please report it to us. We have made this as seamless as possible, which I believe was what has led to so much early success. Our contact information is the following email. It's smoke shops, smokeshopcomplaints@sheriff.nyc.gov, or they can call 212-NY-YORK, which is 212-639-9675, or 311, which currently takes the complaints and reports it to the sheriff's office. Now I'd like to discuss the legislation being heard today. Intro 557 would require OTI to create a new 311 category for reports of unlicensed cannabis retailers. I strongly believe in and support any effort to ensure that every single unlicensed cannabis dispensary and illegal smoke shop is reported and then inspected. Our current process is working, and 311 does take complaints and direct them to our office. So far, over 1,000 complaints have come into 311, and we are in constant coordination with them to receive this information. In addition, as I mentioned earlier, we have an email inbox and a phone number for constituents to report illegal activity. We have received thousands of reports that have led to hundreds of inspections of suspected cannabis sellers. At this point, we do not want to disrupt our process in any way that would lead to more administratively burdensome tasks, while the sheriff's office needs to be narrowly focused on completing as many inspections as possible each day. Intro 981 would mandate additional reporting requirements on a quarterly basis relating to the total number of inspections, the agencies involved in the inspections, and whether the store was licensed. This bill would expand on existing reporting provisions by requiring that if a store is found to be unlicensed, the sheriff's office would be required to provide detailed information relating to the violation, civil summonses, and arrests. At this point in the operation, the sheriff's office is working around the clock to inspect unlicensed stores in the city. The team we have assembled is dedicated to transparency, whether this is responding to the letter sent by the council, accommodating members' requests for ride-alongs, or even staff members' inspections. Because we view the council as a true partner in this operation, with mandating another reporting requirement would be overly burdensome, and therefore, we cannot support Intro 981 at this time. In conclusion, Operation Padlock to Protect has led to safer communities, a better quality of life, and the reassurance that the key to prosperity is public safety. The work is only just beginning, but I look forward to our continued partnership as we all commit to inspecting every single unlicensed cannabis shop in the city. Thanks again for the opportunity to testify before you all today, and I'm happy to take any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Before that, I want to recognize we've been joined, in addition to those we mentioned earlier, Councilmember Banks, Christian Sanchez, Louis, and Hudson, and then we're going to hear an opening statement from public advocate Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to sheriffs, and Anthony Miranda. It was just difficult work. Good morning. My name is Jermani Williams, and I am the public advocate for the City of New York. Thank you to Chair Brewer, Chair Brennan, and members of the Committee on Oversight and Investigations and Finance for holding this hearing and for allowing me to share my statement. Since New York State legalized adult-use cannabis or recreational marijuana in 2021, unauthorized cannabis retailers have proliferated, in part due to the slow rollout of licensed dispensaries throughout the city and state. Up until April of this year, New York City had limited enforcement measures to curb the expansion of these unlicensed smoke shops, of which some estimates had at more than 2,000 storefronts. But the legalization of marijuana use investment in communities that were harmed by its prohibition was also part of the equation, including the distribution of retail licenses. I said last year to the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protections, perhaps we can, in addition to enforcement, consider the legitimization of certain unlicensed retailers via transitional licenses, which would place them under state regulations and ensure health and safety guidelines are followed and prevent sales for underage individuals. This expansion could be done so in a way where direct profits and funds end up in the hands of individuals and communities harmed by the so-called war on drugs. The faster we close unlicensed shops safely, the more we can grow, focus on the growth of the licensed cannabis market. In April, the state announced an initiative that would allow law enforcement to padlock unauthorized cannabis shops and fine the landlords of these properties. Very rarely do you see the left, the right, and the center pleading for more support for enforcement of closing down these properties, illegal shops, and it took way too long for New York City to get the tools that it needed. This resulted in the mayor's Operation Padlock to Protect, a joint effort between the NYPD, sheriffs of office, and Department of Consumer and Worker Protections. As of August, the city shut down over 1,000 illegal smoke shops with a total of $75 million in civil penalties. I would say, just the sheriff's department, even before this, during the pandemic, I've always said, the way the sheriff's department has shutting down things in a pandemic, up until late, dealing with the marijuana, we had seen not as many complaints, so I always wanted to give credit to the sheriff's department. When NYPD was involved, we see a lot of complaints, not as many here. But there have been some issues and some concerns of late, perhaps it might be the joint processes going on, where some things have resembled some aggressive policing tactics and due process violations. So while there's been some positive moves, we have some concerns that are starting to grow. For instance, in May, law enforcement officers, including NYPD, entered a Staten Island storefront and requested access to the back of the store, and the clerk asked to see a court order. Officers disregarded the request, jumped over the counter, and shortly after, the clerk was in handcuffs and charged with obstruction of justice. Notably, this occurred before any unlicensed cannabis products were found. And in August, a judge also found due process violations and how the sheriff's office went about closing a convenience store accused of illegally selling cannabis. Let me be clear, we want law enforcement to have power and explicit guidelines, as well as the personnel, to be able to do their job, and want to make sure that continues, and I want to support that. And again, for the most part, it's been different the way the sheriff's department has done things in NYPD. I don't want to see that start to change. The purpose of enforcing violations on unlicensed shops is to prevent harm and support growth of those who have worked to operate a safe and regulated market for cannabis. The legalization of cannabis in New York has a watershed moment, aiming to rectify decades of overpolicing and injustice inflicted upon Black and Brown communities in particular. With the closure of illicit smoke shops, we in the city must be careful not to fall back in the cycles of aggressive policing violations of New Yorkers' rights. We can uplift those historically impacted by low-level marijuana arrests entering an emerging market. We can make sure that we have the power and resources we need to shut down the illegal markets, and as the legal marijuana market grows, so will the city and state, as it also mends longstanding inequities. New York City will definitely be a better place for it. Hopefully, you can address some of the concerns that were there, and also let us know what else we can do to help you to make sure you have what you need to be able to close these, and hopefully, we don't use incarceration tools when we don't have to. We can just shut it down, padlock it, take the stuff that we need, and try to prevent it from opening again. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
We've also been joined by Councilmember Holden. Okay, first question. Local Law 107 of 2023 prohibits landlords, as you know, from knowingly renting commercial space to unlicensed cannabis retailers. It went into effect 14 months ago. I think you have not issued any violations, but you have sealed 1,000 shops. That could be $10 million in revenue. I know you mentioned this is not a revenue generating, but if people are breaking the law, they should pay a fine, in my opinion. So why are we not sending, you sent warning letters, as you indicated, to landlords? I know that the DAs have done the same, but I believe this law has not been enforced. Landlords are far more likely to pay the fines than, as you suggest, illegal business operators who disappear. So please explain what's going on with enforcement of Local Law 107 of 2023.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. We have issued letters to every single shop if we find violations, so on a regular basis.
To the shops?
On the shops and the building owners. The building owners get automatic notices when we find violations, and they are put on notice that we have found illegal activity at their business. For the most part, we have found that landlords have been very cooperative once they're notified, and have been working with not only our office, but the various district attorneys, trying to evict the illegal tenants that they have, with people breaking the leases. So we have not had the occasion yet to have to fine a landlord or take legal action against a landlord that I'm aware of, but I know that we are also working closely with the various district attorney's offices and supplying the information of the same locations that we do inspections on, so they can also take the appropriate steps to take action against the landlords.
All right. So what you're saying is the landlords have all been cooperative in when you go to a commercial enterprise on their premises? You've not had any that are not cooperative?
At this point, I say that they have been primarily cooperative with the process that we're engaged in, and those that haven't, I know that some of the district attorney's offices have taken direct action against a few landlords.
Okay. But you don't know which ones from the DA's office?
I do not.
Okay. I want to thank you, because last month, thanks to you, we went to an Amsterdam Avenue illegal operation, and there was a secret door that led to an illegal dwelling, and we know that people were living there with water and squalor. It was dangerous, full of code violations, housing, building, and fire. And I wanted to know, did your office do any updates with DOB, HPD, and the Fire Department for that particular site, or maybe other sites that have similar situations? How do you coordinate with other agencies?
On a regular basis, if we go into a location and find these type of violations, we would notify the Buildings Department or the Fire Department, depending on the gravity of the situation, so it is part of our normal process.
Okay. But you do have any tracing of having done that, where you've been able to notice, so that the community knows that that particular or any site has follow-up? How does the public know that you're doing that?
I don't think that information is shared with the public in terms of other notifications to other agencies.
Okay. I know that Councilmember Banks will talk about this, and if Councilmember Joseph attends, she will also, but there are some retailers where you have closed, and then the operation continues right outside the door with a locked gated store behind them. What are you doing about those situations?
So the law is very particular. Once the street enforcement will fall to the New York City Police Department when it's like street enforcement, when we can tie the outside activity directly to the business that used to be operating there, then the law provides certain provisions that we can take additional action ourselves, but we work with the police department depending on what those situations call for.
Have you had situations in that I just described where between you and the police department, it has been closed down, because it's my impression that they're operating? In other words, have you seen situations that I just described? Have you referred them to the police department, and have you seen action as a result?
We have made referrals to the police department on cases. We have been able to tie certain outside activity to the brick-and-mortar locations as well, and we have taken action against both the street activity and the brick-and-mortar locations as well.
I'm sure that Councilmember Banks will add more to that question. Some of the ones that I have seen, these illegal cannabis shops, they close during the day, they open at night in order to evade you, because they think the sheriff only comes during the day. So my question's to you, do you have nighttime raids? And if so, how many? Have you started them? Are they successful? How do you, what kind of hours do you operate, and are there some that are only during the evening, as I see?
We have received information that some locations are operating in the evening hours. The hours of the personnel are adjusted, operations are adjusted to target those locations as well, so we work different days of the week and different hours.
Okay. Do you know how many have been nighttime raids? You have any idea how many you've done?
I can get back to you with the details of how many evening inspections we've done, but I don't have that information separated from the regular inspections.
All right. Okay. Councilmember Arius is here also. Thank you. I see trucks. There are some on Broadway and 96th Street, others may have trucks that sell, just like everyone else, I assume illegally. Granted, the state gives it the same authority, I assume, as it does over storefronts, trucks and storefronts. How many have you inspected, and how many have you sealed?
So the trucks are not a sealing mechanism. We do go out and inspect trucks that are selling cannabis. We have different law enforcement tactics to sheriff's tactics to be able to remove those trucks, issue the appropriate fines, and seize all the products inside.
Do you know how many you have seized in terms of trucks?
We have a separate category for mobile vehicles. I can get you-
issue the appropriate fines, and seize all the products inside.
Do you know how many you have seized in terms of trucks?
We have a separate category for mobile vehicles. I can get you that number as well.
Okay. On March 9th, the mayor and OTI released a report called "The State of 311." This is about 557 that I know you have some challenge with. The mayor said 311 triumphs because it meets New Yorkers where they are. What started as a phone number has evolved into a website, a mobile app, text to 311, the kiosk, social media platforms, all providing connection to our government. I believe that those who run 311 are very dedicated, and these channels have proved to be an invaluable resource for New Yorkers. So why is it better to field complaints in-house rather than three, through 311? And I'll add, the reason to go through 311 is for the public to also have the data, because obviously, it's important for you to have the data and then act on it, but it's really important for that to be available to the public for all of those who want to do mapping and do their own kind of analysis. So why do you not think that it should go through 311 as other agencies do, as opposed to just to your website? I mean, to your email?
Just for clarity purposes, I think when the bill was first introduced, we were not, 311 was not in effect at the time. We are using 311. They do report to us and send notifications to us on a regular basis. This began just after April, when we had the, received a new authority. And May, we started 311, and I said, we received over 1,000 complaints already to the 311 system.
Okay, but what I'm trying to say is it doesn't operate as, in other words, when I complained to HPD about a building situation, I don't have to send it to an email. I just send it to 311. So I think we're going to have a difference of opinion on that particular issue. The mayor's management report has a section dedicated to 311. And yesterday, when the MMR came out, it said, "With so many New Yorkers accessing government resources through 311, its work is tied to fair and transparent service delivery, particularly for non-English speakers whom it aims to serve in their preferred language." As you know, underserved communities often rely on 311 for support and easy access to government. How many of the 10 designated citywide languages are spoken by the staff who monitor the smoke shop complaints at sheriff.nyc.gov? Because as you know, this is an important issue, language access. Whereas at 311, they do have a lot of languages, if I may say so.
Again, we have the emails, they send an email in that has the different languages that we can change and translate as well. However, the 311 complaints come from 311. So we get those on a regular basis. I get reports every morning on the new, how many 311 complaints came in the day before. So I, I think, I believe that the miscommunication is that prior, when the bill was first introduced, this was not operating as a 311 process. And currently, we have a 311 process in place that communicates with the people first and also forwards calls to our office when we're in operating hours.
If a neighbor sees an illegal operation, wouldn't it be helpful with enforcement instead of having to send an email to the smoke shop complaints? You got a notification from 311 with the address of the store and the nature of the complaint. Does that happen now, or does everybody have to go through the web, the email?
No, that happens now.
Okay. In terms of Intro 981, how many data analysts are assigned to Operation Padlock to protect? How many?
I'm sorry?
How many? In other words, we're talking about data reporting. This is Intro 981. And I know your concern is that you already have a lot of work to do. And understandably, nobody wants to do more. And I understand that, that's what you said in your testimony. So my question to you is, do you have any data analysts assigned to the operation? Because even though you say you don't want more work, I do think we need this data. So is there any data analyst assigned in your office to Operation Padlock to protect? Or maybe working with OTI or anybody else?
I think OTI is working on a number of upgrades to the systems to make them more responsive to requests. We do have people in various titles working in Operation Padlock to protect. And we do have several different reporting requirements already. And I believe it's also a reporting requirement in the budget that says that we have to report certain information. So to that regard, there's no one dedicated to just that task. If that's what you're asking, there is no one just dedicated to that one task.
What software do you use in your office to track and analyze enforcement data, if any, software?
We predominantly use spreadsheets in our office, and I'm sure that somebody more technical than me can, can share the, the additional data. We are working with OTI, again, ongoing projects right now to upgrade, create databases, exchange communication, and not only with ourselves, but also with the other agencies that are part of the Sheriff's Joint Compliance Task Force to be able to respond and coordinate all the efforts that are being made.
Okay, I mean, my feeling would be if you had the software, the Police Department has the same problem. They have more paper than paper. I mean, I've never seen so much paper at the Police Department. So I think in general, we need more software to do the analysis. But I'm saying, if you had the software, which sounds like OTI is working on, it would not be hard to come up with the data that we're asking for in this intro. Tobacco and cigarette violations. What did your office, why did the office wait for the state law? As you know, I appreciated working with you on closing Zaza Waza. I have to give Consumer and Worker Protection because they were the ones that actually did it in the end. But why did your office wait for the state law to change before raiding these stores, like we did with Zaza Waza, for tobacco and e-cigarette violations? Your data suggests that 90% of the penalties issued to these stores is for something other than cannabis, and the amount of money and penalties these stores face is massive and puts them out of business. That's what could have happened. So I'm just wondering, again, this is a bit of history, but why did we not do more on closing based on tobacco and e-cigarette even before we had the state law?
I believe that has been, prior to me becoming the sheriff, there have been a number of efforts through the nuisance abatement process, which we know has been a long process for them to get to, get to closing any locations. The current process allows a cricker format, a more responsive, to being able to close locations immediately after finding violations, and the process for them having their due process to have a hearing to hear the facts of the case. This does not exist under the other statutes for cigarette enforcement or for bait enforcement.
Okay. A city hall person told The Post on Sunday that many fines haven't been collected yet because the city doesn't have the authority to do so, but we're hoping to start the collection process very soon. What does that mean? Now, I know what you stated in your excellent testimony is that the fines don't really kick in until sometime forward, and that this is not a revenue enhancement process. It's mostly to close and deal with quality of life. But if people break the law, to me, they need to pay their fines. So what is the status with collection process, as you understand it?
As I said in the testimony, before it becomes judgment, when, when these fines become judgment, then it becomes, comes back to the sheriff's office for enforcement. But outside of that, it's not in the sheriff's office. The ultimate, the hearing offices and the other city agencies deal with the collection process. It does take a minimum of 120 days, and it can take longer based on the adjournments that are potential adjournments that can be requested. Some of these time periods go for 90 days, and if they went, let's say they went through an entire 120-day process, and somewhere just before the 120 days, they filed for an extension or responded and requested a hearing, then there's, a new clock would start, and then they start all over again. So I think there's a lot of nuances in terms of how it gets to actual judgment before we can collect on it. But that also, the process before that, before judgment doesn't fall to the sheriff's office.
Okay, I mean, I do think, with all due respect, when I always hear one agency saying it's not ours, it means that all the agencies are siloed a bit. And I'm not saying it's your fault, but we need not to have this silo, and all of us as one administration, and we should be looking at it as such. Because when you, when you, you know, you're assessed, you know, that huge number, and you're getting such a small fraction, I'm sure that the, my colleague will ask you more about that. But there's something wrong with this process.
I can definitely go into more detail in terms of the process, like it says. When we issue the first violations, they can have a hearing within, within five business days or 45 days later, depending on the violation. Depending on which, which end of the spectrum you're on, after the 45-day period, they get a hearing, and then they have up to 90 days before they even have to show up and request a hearing. And then they can have an adjournment or ask for an extension, at which point it'll also continue past that 90 days. So again, this is not a silo of information. It's just that other agencies have their particular guidelines, timeframes, for which payment and compliance are both oath, not only oath, but the other agencies as well. And that, again, is not in the sheriff's office. Those timeframes are legal mandates that they must comply with.
Okay. Now, we're going, this, this is also back to the issue of reporting. Now, I know that we're waiting for reports from the sheriff's office. And then the sheriff's office perhaps correctly said that we haven't been told by the Office of Cannabis Management, which is to state exactly how the mechanism should work. So we can't do the reporting until OCM tells us. So what are you doing? We've written to OCM, I have written to OCM. I have not heard back as to what that process is. But do you have to, do you feel that you need to wait? Have you been in touch with OCM? What is going on in terms of the mechanism for getting the public the information that I think they deserve?
Again, we do communicate with OCM as doing ongoing enforcement efforts. I know that they have experienced their own challenges in, in terms of their operations. But to the extent that we need to exchange information, we do. I, I don't, I'm, again, I can't speak to any other challenges that OCM is having, reporting back. So when we can, and when we do, we do communicate with them about enforcement activity.
Okay, but you know, understand that as a result of this, the public is not getting, except for this hearing, information that I think they deserve. So are you pressuring OCM, as I am, to try to come up with a mechanism?
We, we are absolutely communicating with OCM and constantly asking for information that they may be challenged with supplying. But as much as is available to them, that they're able to give to us, they do share with us.
Okay. The MMR, Mayor's Management Report, as you know, was released yesterday. It doesn't include electronic monitoring of individuals released on bail as a service performed by the sheriff's office. But I think that you do, you do it. Can you share an example of how the all-hands-on-deck nature of Operation Padlock to Protect I have to say perhaps negatively impacts electric monitoring or other things that you're doing because you don't have enough sheriffs to be able to do all this work? So can you comment on that?
I thank you for the question. As always, any, any agency appearing before you would always say that we also, always would like more, more staff, more personnel. The electronic monitoring program has the personnel assigned to it that is operational. We are at the, maximizing the responsiveness to electronic monitoring. And as you indicated, we have a host of other responsibilities, not only the electronic monitoring, but orders of protection, the ERPOS, the TURPOS, the Ghost Vehicle Enforcement Program that we also do. So there are a number of other responsibilities to the sheriff's office. So it's not just cannabis enforcement. But today, again, we focus on cannabis enforcement. It does take a number of our resources, but we are able to maintain the operations that we are required to operate.
Okay, and me, others may feel differently about that, as you know.
Absolutely.
Obviously, we have vacant storefronts. You mentioned some in your testimony. Are you working with Cannabis NYC or Small Business Services, or anybody else, again, trying to get away from silo agency to figure out how to populate those vacant storefronts? I know, that's not your job. I got it. But guess what? One city, one agency shouldn't be...
Absolutely. We do go out with NYC Cannabis when they do community forums, and whenever they ask us to join them, we go out at any number of community events as we're invited to, as well as the sheriff's office, not only to inform people, the activities of what we're doing overall, the operations of the sheriff's office, but also in any way that we can to share information. So we do that on a regular basis.
Okay. And then, when you report to Commissioner Nie Black, I assume you, you discussed Operation Padlock to Protect. There's this task force on this topic. How often does this task force meet? What do they do? What kind of policies are coming out of the task force that we understand exists with the different agencies? So you are less siloed, hopefully?
We're, we're not in a silo. We do speak on a regular basis. I don't know that, I, I cannot speak to whether it's a scheduled meeting every two weeks, or I know that we speak regularly, almost on a daily basis, on some level of Operation Padlock to Protect and the different nuances that are occurring each and every day. So again, I don't need necessarily say that we have only speak about it on any scheduled meeting basis. But we do have conversations and meetings on a regular basis on various topics, and not only involving Padlock to Protect, but the overall operations of the sheriff's office as well.
Okay, thank you very much, and I will turn it over to my colleague. Also, Councilmember Powers and Councilmember Osay have joined us.
Thank you, Chair Brewer. I want to talk, Sheriff, about headcount. As of the FY25 adopted budget, Department of Finance has a budgeted headcount of 1,983 positions. Of those, 310 are within the sheriff's unit appropriations. Represents roughly 15% of the budgeted headcount. Could you tell us what the current budgeted and actual headcount is for the sheriff's office?
The budgeted headcount is 224. The active headcount is 128. The vacancies are 93.
Are there certain positions that have higher vacancy rates than others?
Yes.
Which ones?
The deputy sheriff's rank.
Okay. Before Operation Padlock, the sheriff's role of investigating illegal marijuana shops was significantly smaller. Thanks to legislation at the state, you now have more power to investigate and make arrests. Has hiring increased since the creation of Operation Padlock?
I'm sorry, I need to correct the statement that you're making. You just, if you can repeat how you said this question again?
Sure. So before, before Operation Padlock, the sheriff's role of raiding the illegal marijuana shops was significantly smaller and harder, right? Once the state gave you, once the state legislation passed, you now have more power. The question is, has hiring increased since the creation of Operation Padlock?
Okay. We conduct inspections of smoke shops, not raids, just for clarity. We were not inspecting smoke shops until it became, the authority was granted to the Sheriff's Office. Prior to that, we were smoking for other violations in various locations through the Sheriff's Joint Compliance Task Force.
So have you, have you hired more since the, since you got that authority? That's the question.
We have, we are currently slated to start a class, hopefully this month of October.
And as, and you mentioned the vacancy rate. Is there a higher focus at the Sheriff's Office on hiring these deputies?
Absolutely. We have been trying to hire deputies quite some time, this entire process. So it didn't just start today. They had to take an examination. After the examination, we had to do background checks on them. We're completing fingerprinting process. And then, like I says, I believe that we have a 90-approved headcount for the academy class. It'll be the largest academy class in the history of the Sheriff's Office.
So we received a letter from your office yesterday. In it, you said currently there are approximately 180 employees assigned to the task force. How much of your staff is dedicated to Operation Padlock?
I believe our number is, no, the 180 is a combination of all the agencies that are involved in enforcement, just so for clarity. The 180 comes from the police department's personnel that are assigned, the personnel assigned from DCWP, the Sheriff's Office, the various support staff that we have, and the various attorneys that are assigned from the different agencies that are also working on this project. That's where you get to 180. So it's not 180 from our office. From our office, we are probably about, about 30 personnel that are working on Padlock to Protect.
So there's 30 folks, 30 employees, Sheriff's Office, who their singular job is, is Operation Padlock?
No one has a singular job of Operation Padlock. So they multitask, but we have approximately 30 personnel that are assigned to work in the Padlock to Protect at various points.
Okay. Back in June, you wrote us that you estimate about 50 to 75 people deploy each day in which operations are scheduled. Is the task force growing now?
Yes, sir. Our goal is to dispatch at least 15 teams that are comprised of anywhere between five to seven personnel, including all the agencies.
And... Okay. So at the FY25 executive budget hearing, your agency testified that the Sheriff's Office operates with other city agencies during these inspections, such as PD, DCWP, other agencies. Regarding task force staff from other agencies, has the number assigned to assist you remained stable?
It has increased.
Okay. And what is the number of personnel assigned to Sheriff's Joint Compliance Task Force from the Sheriff's Office, NYPD, DCWP, any other agencies? So how many folks are sort of on loan to you?
It's 180. There's approximately 80 to 100 personnel from the New York City Police Department, from police officers, supervisors. I think there's one or two lieutenants and a captain that oversees the operation. DCWP has two supervisors, 10 inspectors that work with us, and they will interchange people depending on what their needs are. And they may have other people in their office that crunch data for the, for the enforcement that they're taking. So that's why I said just functioning in our office would be that number. I'm sure they have other people in their office that are dedicated to it. And Sheriff's Office deploys one team leader to each of those teams. The 15 teams has a team leader that operates to supervise the activities of the team.
And for, for legal matters, do you rely on NYPD's attorneys or do you have your own attorneys?
Department of Finance has its own attorneys that represent us. And we have, in the task force response, we do utilize attorneys from the New York City Police Department to support the Padlock to Protect effort.
So legal, you know, legal marijuana shops bring in tax revenue for the city, revenue which is, of course, higher than that of illegal shops. Could you tell us how much tax revenue has, has DOF collected from the legal marijuana shops to date?
I know that the, in FY23, it was estimated that the legal cannabis shops, I mean, the legal cannabis shops brought in approximately seven, over $700,000 in revenue. When FY24, they brought in close to $3 million, a little bit over $3 million. And in FY25, it's estimated that $10 million will be brought in from legal cannabis shops.
Do we have a sense of how much revenue the city has forgone as a result of the illegal marijuana shops?
I do not.
Does DOF calculate the amount of lost tax revenue from the illegal shops?
I do not believe that that is something that can be calculated based on my knowledge, but that's very limited in that respect. I don't know if anybody does, does those figures, but I'm not aware of anybody putting that together.
And do we have a number, a total number for how much sales tax, how much sales tax specifically DOF has collected from the licensed shops?
I do not believe there's any sale tax on the cannabis. What they do is they get revenue back from the state, and the state pays the appropriate percentage that's supposed to go back to the city.
Is there a projected revenue for the legal shops for FY25?
FY25 is supposed to be over $10 million.
Okay. We received a letter from your office yesterday. I mentioned the aforementioned letter. As part of the letter, you stated that the Office of the Sheriff does not seize cash from any of the locations. NYPD seizes cash for safekeeping and investigative review when necessary. To the best of your knowledge, has any Sheriff's Office employee during any inspection of any of those shops ever seized any cash?
During Padlock to Protect operations?
Yeah.
I do not believe so.
Okay. Which asset forfeiture account does seize cash get deposited into?
If we haven't seized the cash, I think that's, I could probably get that for you. If there's any seized cash by the Sheriff's Office, what asset forfeiture accounts they utilize, I can probably come back and be able to give you that information. I don't have that available right now.
Okay. Because NYPD, right, they have an asset forfeiture account and the Office of the Sheriff has asset forfeiture account, or is there another account? There was a controller's report for FY23. The ending balance for the Office of the Sheriff asset forfeiture account was about $867,000 with about $295,000 in revenue from that year. So do you have a projected revenue from the asset forfeiture for FY25?
I do not.
Does the seized cash fund any specific programs within DOF?
No, you're saying for asset forfeiture generally? I mean, there are, there are rules and regulations about how you can utilize any money that's taken by asset forfeiture, and there are specific guidelines to that. So I don't have that information available, but I think one of the things you can do is for training and other things like that. But it's very specific about the use, and we have somebody else in the office that's assigned to taking care of that. So there would be the person that would speak to the particulars on that, or I could find out more for you at a later time.
But right here today, do you have a total amount for cash that's been seized at these inspections?
Okay. Two different questions. Asset forfeiture and the general nature of where we get funding from, that may come from various resources not related to cannabis enforcement. However, we're talking about cannabis enforcement since Padlock to Protect. The vouchering process has been designated with the New York City, NYPD, New York City Police Department. So that currently, they are the ones who voucher the property depending on the circumstances of the location. They will either voucher it as safekeeping or they will voucher it as investigatory evidence depending on the different circumstances. So it will pretend on, depends on the circumstances of each in particular inspection and how we got there.
But you don't have a, you don't have a total number for how much?
I do not. I can definitely get the information after, afterwards by confirming with the New York City Police Department.
Okay. Thank you. We've also been joined by Councilmembers Stevens and Wrestler on Zoom. Okay. See, FY25 adopted budget includes $49.1 million in the sheriff's unit of appropriation, $29.1 million for personal services, and $20 million for OTPS, other than personal services. Is this enough funding for your office?
Again, it's one of those questions. If we ever got up here and said we had enough, that would be an incorrect answer. So considering that the responsibilities the Sheriff's Office is taking on and the need to have more personnel, we're always in need of having additional, but we will operate and meet the needs of both the city and the mandate that is required at the Sheriff's Office.
So, but as, as the operation ramps up and continues to ramp up, will, will your department require additional funding to support? I mean, you have much more responsibility now than you did before.
Absolutely.
I don't think saying that you might need some more money would, Jacque isn't watching, it's okay.
Again, it says, I'm sure that we will make new needs requests as we go on. We just had approval for our academy class. We're working through those details now. I believe, again, as I stated, I think this is going to be the largest class in the history of the Sheriff's Office. We have 90 positions, and I'm just told 90 positions that have been approved for this class, and we are absolutely looking for more. So to the extent that you can help us and make sure that we get more headcount and more personnel, that'd be fantastic.
Okay. Just have a couple more. According to Mayor Adams, the administration has issued more than $65 million in civil penalties as of August 4th at unlicensed cannabis shops since the launch of Operation Padlock to Protect back in May. However, according to open data on Oath, on the hearing division's case statuses, the Sheriff's Office has only issued approximately $12 million, just $10 million of which was upheld by Oath. And then in your letter yesterday, you said the total value of civil penalties issued for cannabis-related violations is about $30,725,000, $31 million. So can you explain how you arrived at the $31 million number and why there's a difference between what you stated and what the mayor and Oath have stated?
Again, Operation Padlock to Protect does not only issue cannabis violations. They issue violations for tobacco products as well. So there are other things that have to take place in these inspections that we uncover, and we have to take the summary action that's necessary. And that's why you get to the 104 million, $104 million penalties that were issued. However, when you specifically asked for cannabis-related fines, then we took the, the amount of value of flower cannabis, the edibles, and I think there was one other product, the THC vapes. So we added those totals separately of what we seized and the value was, and then we put that, we put that in the numbers.
And do you have an idea of how much of those fines have been paid as of today?
Again, I think as we spoke earlier, the process for paying the fines has not come to fruition yet. There are these 120 days, if not more, before they become judgment debt. I believe that Oath has collected close to over, a little more than $200,000 in Oath when they, when people pay it ahead of time. But the process for collection has an entire timeframe, legal timeframe, that they can abide by getting extensions, adjournments, and then therefore, they will not come to the place of collection by the Sheriff's Office until they become judgment debt. And that is still, we have still not reached that maturity date yet.
And anecdotally, are you shutting down less shops daily than you were a month or two ago? Are they still, is it still a game of whack-a-mole or is it starting to, to level out?
I think whack-a-mole kind of gives people a sense of no hope. I should tell you that we expected over 950-something locations that have passed inspection. So that means that people are understanding that there's, that we're out there, that we're going to be coming back. So they're becoming compliant with the law, and we'll continue to do it. The law provides that it's not just one visit. Some circumstances, we have to go back more than once, either two or three times, depending on the circumstances. So that's why we have to go back to locations multiple times.
So how would a, how would a place then, that you, an illegal cannabis shop that you inspect, and then you go back and now they're in compliance? That means what? They're no longer selling illegal cannabis?
That's correct.
Okay.
And as I reported, I did, gave you a number of, a number of businesses, locations, 140-some locations changed business already. Another 100-plus locations were turned back to the landlords. They followed the nuisance abatement process and probably evicted the tenant. And then there's a process online for the businesses themselves to be able to become compliant with the law, that they, they follow the abatement process, and it'll be reviewed to give them back to locations as well. But it's open to inspection, and they have to pass inspection, which means they are no longer selling illegal products.
And in your letter yesterday, you said that there are 127 stores that were originally issued a sealing order that the office then withdrew. So it's 127 stores that were shut down and then reopened. Could you tell us why?
There'd be, I guess it's various reasons. We issued over 1,000 sealing orders. So of 127, I believe we're at 15% or something, a little off, 15 to 13% in terms of what has been overturned. And they will, they will be overturned for, for different reasons. So there's no one reason. There'll be various reasons, and it's based on the legal arguments that are made, the recommendation by Oath, and the follow-up review by our office and the other attorneys involved in the review process.
Okay. So a couple of weeks ago, the mayor announced that over 1,000 stores had been sealed. Is that not an accurate number?
That is.
Okay. Because the letter yesterday, the letter yesterday that said there were 983 stores were sealed.
That means that the 875 locations still sealed because some of the locations were, were unsealed. All right. So the actual numbers are, the actual numbers are 1,152 sealed locations, 139 seals were to end, 138 vacate orders. That's what we have right now. So approximately 875 locations are still sealed.
And do we have a sense from, from the legal folks, how many of these? I know there hasn't been a ton of time, but, but how many of these sealing orders stand up in court?
Back to our stats, I'll give it to you. Of the 1,124 sealing orders issued, 208 sealing orders were dismissed by Oath. That's a total of 19%.
Okay. I have some questions from the majority whip, but I'm going to give it back to Chair Brewer and some of my colleagues. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you. I have two quick questions, and then I'll turn it over to my colleagues. One is, I know we talked about vape disposal. So what's the process for storage and disposal of illicit material? I know, for instance, the E liquid and vape is an issue because it's toxic, and my understanding is you have to send it out of town and then pay for that. And I want to know how much is spent on that, and is that what's happening? And what are we doing to try to have a more local response?
The destruction of vape is a very particular process. There are only certain people that are licensed to destroy the vape products. When they're stored, they're, they are completely harmless. However, when you determine that you want to destroy them, the process for destruction, that makes it hazardous material. I believe that the police department has just finalized their contract because they are now the holders of the product right now. And that process has been approved, and they'll start the process of destroying the vape product. There are very particular, very few licensed people in the industry that handle this process.
Well, there's one in Ohio, if I remember correctly. So we're not still going to Ohio? The police department's taking over? I'm a little confused.
No. I think it still goes to Ohio in the end. Okay. I, I believe that NYPD's contract has found somebody local to handle the process. But again, I don't know the particulars of the contract, and I'm not sure if in the end, any other product ends up still in Ohio. But Ohio was the go-to place traditionally.
Okay. I'm just saying, again, data. So it's fine if the only place is Ohio, but then one of the questions we have, and maybe this comes from the State Office of Management, Cannabis Management, that has to tell us what you need to give us in terms of data. But the point of the matter is, either for the MMR or for the public or just generally, we should know, you know, what's going on with the contract up to now with Ohio. It takes, I think, personnel to go to Ohio. How much does all of that cost? Fine, it's going to end. NYPD is going to take over. But all of that is not clear. That's an example of what I'm saying. We need the data.
That information is available, Councilwoman, I just don't have it here. I'll be sure to communicate with the New York City Police Department because they're the ones who recently negotiated the contract.
Okay.
And we'll be able to share those details with you.
Okay. So it's not anything through, even previously, it was not through your office? It was all through NYPD?
No.
Oh. I'm confused now.
Well, you asked about what currently is being done under Padlock to Protect. Anything under Padlock to Protect has been going to the police department.
But before that, you were doing it thanks to your investigations with a Ohio firm that does the proper procedures?
Correct. Before that, we did have a local contractor that was the facilitator. Ultimately, the contractor would bring the product to Ohio because that's the dispense, the place where the product is actually destroyed. But we had a local contract prior to that, where they would come in with specific types of barrels, seal the product, and then they were required, and they are the ones that were authorized to transport. So we are still also negotiating a contract directly as well, but it has not been finalized yet.
Okay. I'll leave it at that. But I have to say, just listening to you, it is a little confusing because normally you get, this is what happened, I'm making this up, in 2023. This is what's going to happen in 2024. This is when the contract is registered. None of that is clear to me from listening to you. You know, so that's the kind of thing that I think we need to have more clarity on. That's why I'm looking for the data. But I will now turn it over to Councilmember Sanchez and then Hanks, Osay, and Banks. Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you so much, Chair, and thank you, Sheriff, and the entire team for everything that you do and have been doing in my district, certainly. I have several questions regarding what happens in the aftermath of enforcement by the Sheriff's Office and the inter-agency enforcement. In particular, in my district, we've noticed that there have been increases in violence after a shop is shut down. So my first question is, does the Sheriff's Office, and I don't know if NYPD has folks that can answer questions here today, what are, what steps and measures are you putting into place to calm down the violence? Because some of the, some of the drug activity that moved inside of, to those illegal smoke shops then come outside.
Okay. No, the police department is not here to testify about their enforcement on the, on the street level. But that enforcement outside the location or any other street conditions would fall to the New York City Police Department.
Okay. Thank you. That's actually my second question. I know Councilmember Chair Brewer asked about vans. We're seeing a lot of pop-up tables, so is that not in the Sheriff's Department's jurisdiction?
Pop-up tables, not necessarily. Again, most of that will fall to the police department for enforcement, for street enforcement. On certain cases, depending on the situation, we may be able to tie it to some of our enforcement activities.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. So I'll follow up with them. Does the Sheriff's Department do any, provide any education regarding how to become a legal smoke shop when, when you do this enforcement?
Generally, when we go into a location, we will share with them that NYC Cannabis. And then for the people who are truly not informed, then we send them to the State Office of Cannabis Management, where they should be getting the information on how to participate legally. And most people don't understand that is strictly, there's more than one product, more than one way to get involved in the cannabis business. And so they're not informed. People just simply believe there's only the front mechanism of actually selling cannabis when there are other opportunities to get into business as well. That's one of the reasons why we joined NYC Cannabis when they do the community events, to give them a balanced presentation of what law enforcement or what the Sheriff's Office expects and what we see, and how they can operate within the boundaries of the law and be able to have a good business.
Great. Thank you. I'm going to certainly follow up with you on that to make sure that we're, we're able to have you, your presence and their presence at our community events to share information. And then my, my last question, this might not be entirely for you, but is the Sheriff's Office or any other agency that you're aware of in the city, are you working to do education with communities who are turning down, you know, in the community board process, are turning down or saying no to the opening of legal cannabis smoke shops?
We go out and speak at many of the community boards that we're invited to. We also know that many of them have their own cannabis committees. And so we do sit with them when they ask particular questions about what the concerns are and what they're facing. And then we're able to discuss with them what we've been seeing and what's within their basis, things they should ask before they approve anybody to make sure that they haven't been involved illegally and now just trying to join the legal market.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you so much. And again, from the Northwest Bronx, thank you for everything that you've been doing.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chair.
We've been joined by Councilmember Williams. Now Councilmember Hanks, Osay, Banks, and Williams' questions. Councilmember Hanks.
Good morning.
Councilmember Hanks left. Okay. Councilmember Osay.
Thank you so much, Chair Brewer. I just have one question and good morning.
I just wanted to ask who specifically is responsible for making the list of shops that are raided or inspected by your agency?
The locations come in, they come into our office by various means. They are added to the spreadsheet depending on where they are, and then we try to ensure that we have a balanced approach to all five counties when we go out.
Okay, so people submit complaints through 311, through 911, through council offices? Could you maybe elaborate more in terms of how you collect these locations?
They come through 311, they have come through surveys done by the police department, they come from the city council members as well, they come from community meetings, they come from a number of forums where people are exchanging information and they want to report the locations. So we compile that data and it's put in to each of, into the spreadsheet, the database that we have, spreadsheet that we have. And then we have teams that operate in each of the counties. So therefore, that means that we'll break out so many locations per county depending on if we get a cluster that closes. A lot of operational things that we may consider, how many are right next to each other, what the distance between, response time, how many we can get done in a day, and the amount of personnel that's available in that particular county at that time.
So you would say you prioritize some, some shops or locations more than others, maybe?
We prioritize locations where they have reported adults or children getting sick. We prioritize those locations that'll buy our schools, houses of worship, in those areas. Those are the ones that get first priority. We also get priority, we also look at some of the statistics from the police department. If they have heavy crime around a particular store that's an illegal cannabis shop, then we'll go in and try to make sure that we get the, do the inspection of the cannabis shop as soon as possible.
And who particularly compiles this spreadsheet and, and breaks it down for you all to, to, I guess prioritize which locations to, to tackle? Is it, you know, an individual? Is it, is it a group of, of people who, who convene and, and talk about this?
It's more than one person. We have an, an auditor that sits and inputs the data, then we request for them what's needed, but it's more than one person that meets in the morning and determines what we have available, what are our resources for the day, where, what we need to, what's more priority, what's come up in the last 24 hours? Again, we may have something on there, if there's nothing unusual that's come up necessitating an immediate response, then, then we'll go right down the list and we'll keep going through the list until we complete it, which we have completed the first round of inspections already.
And are these all complaint-based, or does the department sometimes add locations to the list that you have seen yourselves?
I believe most of it is gonna be complaint-based. We do, when the teams are out there, if they see a shop opening, and sometimes they will do an inspection, so if we're going into one location, at location A, and then they observe, there's another location, location B that was not on our list, then they will call that location in to see if we have information on it already, and if we don't, we'll put it on the list, and they'll go in and do that inspection as well.
On the list, you, you know, find certain trends in terms of seeing where some boroughs or neighborhoods have a higher concentration of these shops more than others?
I think that there's been a, a kind of fair distribution of illegal smoke shops throughout the entire city and all five boroughs.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chairs.
Councilmember Banks?
Thank you, Chair. Couple of questions pertaining to, first of all, thank you for the Operation Padlock. It's been working in my district. But particularly, once a shop is closed down and is padlocked, what's being done? I'm getting a lot of complaints and calls from residents about activity that has now emerged in front of locations where folks are still continuing some of the illicit activity. What's being done? What's the follow-up being done? Because I, I haven't seen any follow-up by the task force, so I want to know, is there anything in place that's gonna be set up to address this particular issue?
As we indicated earlier, when it comes out to street sales and, and then it falls to the New York City Police Department, it does not fall under the guidelines and the purview of the task force, of, of the joint compliance task force.
They're in front of the business, they're, and still in front of the business. The signage is still up, which obviously still gives, allows them to still promote the business as though it's still in operation, and you're seeing folks sit in front with tents, chairs, crates. So if, if there can be some type of follow-up to, to address that, I would appreciate that.
Now, we do work with the police department, so we're clear about this. I say, I just wanted to make sure about jurisdictional kind of boundaries.
So it's a jurisdiction?
It is, it is by law where we have authority over and where we don't. So sometimes the locations outside are tied to the location which affords us the opportunity to go back. If it's other than independent sales or there's nothing directly tied unto the location that was padlocked, then it would be probably enforcement primarily relying on NYPD and an OCCB to be able to respond to it. And when they ask us, we support those efforts as well, and we'll join them in any operations that they're doing.
Is there anything as far as anything virtual for each councilmatic district that will show the amount of stores that are being padlocked? And is there anything that's, that, that has been made available or created so we can track it outside of, I know the normal report that we get via email, but is there anything we can go on and see and promote to the public?
There is, that technology we have not been able to utilize yet. I'm sure that in the future we might be able to, but currently it doesn't exist. We do share with council members when we are doing inspections in their district so that they're aware of the enforcement because we know that you get the complaints, and you want to be able to respond back to them indicating that some enforcement was taking place. And so when we do that, we do communicate with each of the council members indicating what action was taken within their district.
Are the community boards also in that chain? Are they also notified?
I don't think, community boards are not part of the normal communication process. Sometimes when they ask us directly, then we'll share information with them. Again, it's really driven based on the complaints that they've given us. So if they've given us a list of locations that they said, this is what we're hearing about or what we're complaining about, have you have a response for us? Then we will share data with them or information with them so that they were able to respond to the community and let them know, yeah, we heard your complaints and we took the appropriate action.
And also, once a store is padlocked and that particular entity or LOC or corporation, whatever they're organized as, what is, is there any, are there any resources for those particular individuals? Are they entirely banned from competing for a license? What is being done to assist those folks? Because, you know, the reality is that these are communities that have been, you know, traditionally harmed by, by, by the sell, selling of cannabis, and this particular law was obviously meant to assist and to assist and support communities. So what's being done to assist these folks who have went about it the wrong way and possibly now want to do it the right way? What resources are there to support them so we're not further, pushing them to, to continue or in the black market?
Well, two things I would say is, one, they can go to the New York City, NYC Cannabis, which helps them with their resources and how they can participate in the legal market, and they can go to the State Office of Cannabis Management as well. I do not believe that most of our enforcement has impacted, what do you call it? The traditional market of people that were involved in the legacy market. Most of our enforcement, we have not encountered people from the legacy market. So despite what people want to present, this is mostly people who came into our communities, they are selling illegally and they are profit-driven, and they are selling products that are potentially contaminated and not, have no safety measures, and they are in danger in our community. The packaging alone indicates that they're not trying to comply with any part of the law. If we're going in and finding these type of products, they made a determination that they don't want to participate in the legal market. This is not acceptable. This was never supposed to be part of the new process of when we legalized cannabis. What you're seeing in front of you is exactly what we're finding in these locations, and they have no intention of participating in the legal market if they're doing this.
Well, I mean, from speaking to some of them, they do want to participate, and they're asking, will they be permanently banned from being able to compete for a license?
Yeah.
These are folks who obviously, like, like East New York, Brownsville, who
I, I understand.
Have been harmed by, by this and want to participate, but obviously did it the wrong way and now want to, you know, so we, 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 obviously I understand the need for enforcement, and we need to close down the illegal shops, but we also need to look at a way to give some type of redemption to those folks who are, who, who went about it the wrong way. So.
I completely understand that. We've found those are people, we are definitely helping them. There are resources out there that the city offers and the state offers to be able for people to participate legally in the market in the various forms that they can. But we're focused on the ones that are selling and getting our community sick right now, and that's the enforcement that we're really focusing on. Again, I understand the justice impaired, and I, again, I understand what we're talking about here, but the majority of what we're finding are not in that market, but there are resources available to anyone who wants to participate in the legal market. And I haven't walked into a store yet that says, we're illegal, but we've complied with all the rules and regulations that the state has offered, because there are very particular rules and regulations about opening illegal business, the, the paintings, the coloring, the, the advertisement, and the packaging of product. So I haven't walked into one location that said, I was unable to get a license, I complied with all the other rules and regulations, but I just don't have a license. We haven't encountered that yet. That would be a unique situation to find somebody doing that.
When it comes to signage, once a building is pad, once a storefront is padlocked, is there a requirement for the signage to be removed? I know most landlords, you know, obviously they wait for a lease to be signed, but is there a requirement for the, or do you remove the signage?
No, I think part of the abatement process, when a landlord takes over a property or when their new tenant is coming in, then there are particular rules and regulations about changing the signage. When they're trying to comply to get control of the premises, they have to remove the signs as well.
Okay. And also too, want to find out the, the square footage as far as the, the, the particular locations where smoke shops can be. I noticed that it, 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 it only talks about schools, and it talks about schools and churches or religious organizations. Are group family daycares, smaller daycares, are they included in that?
When we get complaints, we take all the information and we prioritize accordingly. So if it's impacting seniors or somehow interfering with access to certain locations, then we'll take the appropriate corrective action to inspect those locations as soon as possible. But the law provides very specific circumstances by which we can prioritize them, but in our regular rotation, we will get to them. Like I said, we have inspected all the locations on the list. Some require more than one visit, but we are able to do that in a four-month period of time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Sheriff. I know anytime we ask you to come to the district, you come, you were just there last week, so thank you so much. I'm gonna ask a series of questions about arrests and referrals and also geographic areas of focus. So around arrests and referrals, how many arrests have been made during inspections?
Okay, I don't have those numbers, but, and again, during the inspections, the people that are being arrested or not being arrested for cannabis-related violations, if they're being arrested, they're being arrested because we found other illegal products that resulted in them being arrested.
Absolutely. And those arrests, I know a lot of times you do joint actions, so those arrests are being made by the NYPD, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And how many of those arrests have resulted in prosecution? Do you know? No?
I don't know that offhand, no.
Isn't the NYPD, isn't the NYPD not here?
No, they're not here for this meeting.
Oh. Okay. How many, okay, you probably don't know this, but I'll ask it on the record, how many, if any, of these arrests have been declined to be prosecuted by the district attorney's office? You don't know? In spring 2024, as Operation Padlock to Protect swept hundreds of shops suspected of selling unlicensed cannabis, footage of a May 18 raid on Staten Island store captured how enlisting police to conduct regulatory inspections can result in criminal charges, raising concerns about potential due process violations. How is your office working with other agencies, including the NYPD, to avoid harsher tactics while continuing to shutter shop selling unlicensed cannabis products?
Well, again, we are, we have continual training and debriefing of the teams, both at the beginning of the day and at the end of their, a day that we debrief them, and individuals, if we need one-on-one training session or information census, then we will talk to an individual directly. But the, most of the time, we try to give impactful training to the entire group so they all get the same information. The supervision is extremely important to have in place, and when we're out there in the street, and we have, we put extra steps as well to ensure that people are complying with the rules and regulations that we're required to follow.
Thank you. And again, I just wanted to say thank you for all your hard work. I know when we send you smoke shops, you all are quite responsive, and if I could just turn to questions about geographic areas of focus. So outside of people proactively reaching out to your office to tell you about different smoke shops that might be of concern to the community, do you have any specific strategy that you'd like to share around how you prioritize certain enforcements in certain areas?
I'm not sure that we will be able to be as specific as I think you're looking for. However, I would say the following, we do take precaution, safety measures in place. We do evaluate what our response would be. We believe that the size of the teams are adequate to be able to address the situation in a safe manner, and then we have resources available if we believe the situation gets out of control. And sometimes, like I said, it's nine hundred and something shops pass inspection, so it's a, an easy conversation, why we're here, what we're here to do, and then they're, they're compliant with the request that we have, we do inspect the location, and they don't have any violations. They may not have any cannabis violations, so they would not fall under the cannabis laws, but if they have illegal cigarettes or they have vapes, then they will be issued the other violations that we observe.
Yes, I'm fully aware of that, and having many conversations with my police precincts about other ways that they've tried to before the padlock, new laws, they've tried to close smoke shops by figuring out other illegal activity that might be happening. But I guess just to, to reiterate, my question is more so about how you go about prioritizing closing certain smoke shops. So, for instance, I know the council, and I'm not sure if we've received it, but I know the, the council requested a full list of suspected unlicensed storefronts. And so I guess on our end, I'm sure maybe it's clear on your end, but on our end, we're not sure whether these maps display the city's enforcement priorities or simply just show where most illicit cannabis shops are located. So again, we saw that while you have been very diligent in expecting across the city, some areas in particular have received more enforcement than others, such as Lower Manhattan, Harlem, the South Bronx, and Williamsburg. So on our side, we're just trying to understand if there's a method to that madness, or if this is just you being responsive to people reaching out to your office to conduct different types of operations.
There's both method and there is both the complaints that we receive as well. Again, if we see any priority, if somebody has gotten sick from a location, adult or child, then we're definitely gonna be changing the priorities and making sure we take care of that. They are by the schools, again, the imminent threat factors or schools, houses of worship, where kids got sick. So if we get that strategy, then we're gonna prioritize those. Otherwise, if there's nothing out of the ordinary, then we're gonna go right down the list. We, again, because we have teams in each of the five boroughs that affords us the opportunity to be holistic in the approach. If we had a limited, then we would have to say, manage each day, I had ten in this borough, I gotta go ten more in the other borough. And in the current process, we're able to kind of adjust everybody equally and evenly, so it allows that kind of enforcement, of balanced enforcement.
I appreciate that. So just to make sure I heard you correctly, are you saying like you, you kind of have like two tracks? You have maybe folks who are focused on reactively going to assess a particular smoke shop, and then you might have a crew, a crew of people or just the same crew of people also remaining focused on running down the list of shops you may have, regardless of whether or not that particular shop received a complaint that required you to reactively go and potentially enforce?
Anyone put on the list is because we received a complaint.
Hmm.
Okay, so that means that we're required to go do an inspection and investigate whether that is what's going on at that location, and so we make sure that we go through the entire list.
Okay.
And sometimes we do have teams, and we send them out to do observations. We have teams that we go out and to verify the padlocked locations, that they still remain sealed, and then we go out and have teams make observations, especially of the after-hour allegations that people are not operating during, during their day hours, to confirm that there is activity at the location so that we can address it with a different type of operation.
Okay, and so you don't, so do you have any proactive measures, or is it just simply based off of like referrals and people telling your office about a particular smoke shop? So is there, so is, is there, well, you said the list was garnered by people referring things to you, so do you have like any other list of like, I don't know, seeing people must have to apply for something within the city for you to be able to say, okay, we see that this particular shop opened up, let's proactively go? Or is all of your work solely focused on people referring whatever particular complaint to your office?
Primarily complaints referred to the office. Again, if we're in the street and we're doing an inspection and we observe doing an inspection and we observe the location that's not on our list, then we would add that by calling it in ourselves if we see that there's cannabis visible at the location. There's various ways that it can come to our attention, but it has to come to our attention, be placed on the list, see what other activity we had there or not. And then we determine what's the next course of action to take.
Okay. I think I have like one more question, just so I can just understand your work a little bit more too. Is, so, okay, let's say you got 10 complaints for 10 different smoke shops. Maybe two of them are in close proximity to a school, one is in close proximity to a religious institution, and the others are just randomly scattered. They may not be in any close proximity to one of those sensitive areas. Do you prioritize internally? Like, okay, these two are by a school, let's go to that one first. This one is by a religious institution, let's go to that one. Or how do you figure that out internally?
That's exactly it. Prioritize based on if there are any schools or houses of worship, any details, especially if, again, if somebody gets sick, or it's reported that there are a number of young adults, children going into a particular location that's selling cannabis, that there are legend that there's underage sales in the location, then we will prioritize those locations.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you Chairs.
Councilmember Salam?
Thank you Chairs. Just two questions. And thank you for the testimony so far. Given the limit, given the limited resources we may have as a city to respond to the marijuana-related 311 reports, how long would it take to respond to such a report? And how long can we, and how can we improve the response time?
Currently, on the 311 complaints, we're probably in a one or two-day process responding to them. So the response to the 311 complaints is pretty efficient right now.
And currently, how many unlicensed cannabis shops are being inspected and/or padlocked a week? And if there, and is, if there's a new cannabis category in the 311 app, what would the projection look like with the increase of how many shops are being inspected and/or padlocked a week?
311 has been very effective for us receiving complaints. Like I said, the last report, we were at 100%. Then we had over 160 complaints that came in, new locations that we had to add to the list. We quickly went and did those inspections as well. So we're maintaining, keeping up with the 311 complaints that come in. I don't know about any new categories. They get reported, we go out, and based on the information, again, if it's one of the sensitive locations, schools, houses of worship, somebody beginning sick, then they were elevated to the top of the list to make sure that we go out. We also get calls when people try to break the locks and re-enter the locations as well. And that also makes it a priority. If it's a location that was not, was unsealed illegally, then we will respond back to those as well.
And just last thing, as a point of concern, I've been trying to zoom in on some of the items that are on the table. And when I looked at what was there, I said, wow, this is very, very concerning, of course, as you all are presenting this. And I definitely appreciate this example of what's being sold in these shops. Currently, there's still a law that says you can't operate within a certain distance of, say, you know, a toddler's school or something like that. Is that the case?
That is the case.
Okay, because we have at least two that I know of in my district that are operating literally probably five to 10 feet away from a toddler's school. And, you know, they've been telling me that people have been buying and, of course, using right there. And so those of us who don't smoke know that smoke comes into all kinds of windows and doors and crevices and things like that. And just a, just a point of concern that we'll be reaching out to see if we can get that fixed.
Please, right after this meeting, we'll make sure we get the details of the locations from you. As we invite all the city council members, as many of them are taken advantage of, they can communicate directly with us of any locations that come to your attention, especially those that impact on our children or by our schools that need an immediate response. And then we will make sure that we send the appropriate teams to take care of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Councilmember Holden?
Thank you Chairs. Thank you Sheriff for your testimony today. I'm sorry, I was running back and forth. I had another hearing over at 2:50. So if I ask a question that was already answered, I apologize for that. But are you seeing the illegal pot sales? Are they a standalone, most of them standalone pot shop, illegal pot shop, or are they mixed with a bodega or something else? What are you seeing on the, on the street?
We see both. So we see locations that are clearly-
But which one, which one would be the more regular, meaning that the undercover that you're doing sometimes, when you see a shop, and they're, they're usually like 90% other things, like even food and so forth, and then 10% pot? Or are they just, you know, is this prevalent throughout the city where they're mostly just illegal pot being sold or drugs?
I kind of think that it's a combination of the two, not one-
There's no one or the other?
I don't believe so. I think that we have a fair distribution of both that require us to respond to.
So which one is harder to shut down? That's what I'm going on this. Because we raided some shops, especially on Metropolitan Avenue and Middle Village in my district. We closed a few. But the ones that stayed open are the ones that are doing kind of other, you know, they're selling other things. They're selling food, they're, they have a grill in there. So they're still open, and they're still doing business right across the street from a legal establishment.
So again, I think some of the inspections that we did were also prior to us having the authority for sealing. Now that we have the authority for sealing, if we go in and we find threat factors, the imminent threat factors, then we can close them down the first visit. Otherwise, we'll go in and give them a cease and desist notice. And then we have, they're already go back and inspect them 10 days later. So if we found after 10 days that they are still in violation, then we can go back in and then we can seal them immediately as well.
You just padlock them, and how long does that last? Do they got to get a court order? Or what happens on that?
Once the location is sealed, they have a hearing within, they're scheduled to have a hearing within five days if they choose to.
Yeah, because what we're seeing is that they're, many of them are opening up right away. Many of them are staying in business. But most of them are the mixed areas. That means they're doing other things in there, grilling, I mean, legal stuff. But they're, the pot is, I mean, in the one, and I just spoke to the owner of the legal shop, he says he went in there and there was a line out the door on the pot part of it. And, but they're grilling, they're making hamburgers and hot dogs and everything else too. So that's why I don't know if it's harder to shut them down or it's just, it's just as easy.
It takes more than one visit to those locations. It may take a different type of operation, sending in some underage people to purchase. So depending on the circumstances, we'd be happy to discuss it further. But depending on the circumstances there, we may have to change the normal operation and approach it differently.
Again, thank you. Thank you so much for your testimony. And I wish there were more of you guys. So thank you so much. Thank you Chairs.
Okay, I have two questions from Majority Whip Brooks Powers. I think Councilmember Williams touched on it a bit, but based on the publicly available data, around 62% of cannabis summonses have been issued to locations within 1,000 feet of a school. Do we have a sense of what percentage of unlicensed cannabis shops are still open today that are in proximity to a school?
No, sir. I think we can, we can research the locations that we're scheduled to go back to, and then the locations that are coming in and probably get you an updated answer to that. But off the, off the top of the record, I don't-
Is that, is that something that your office would prioritize if you get a report of an unlicensed shop near a school?
Absolutely.
And do we have a breakdown of, there's currently 85, only 85 legal shops in the city, right?
I believe it was, I thought it was 76 or something. I'm not sure of the number.
You don't know how many legal shops there are in the city?
I, yeah, I have it in one of the papers, but I don't think it's 85. I believe it's in the 70s.
Okay. So what is the, do you have a breakdown of the summonses issued by borough?
No, but we can have that for you.
Okay. Okay. Chair Brewer?
Thank you. Just in terms of how long Operation Padlock is going to be spending to get all of these illegal closed. Because, I mean, that's the issue with data. So I, I don't know how many, 3,600 unlicensed now. I know at one point it was 1,400, another point it was 2,800. I've heard 3,000, I've heard 3,600. If it's 3,600 and you're working toward that number, it could be July 25. Maybe if you get the more deputies, it could be sooner. So how are you sort of looking at your schedule to close them all down?
Yeah, I think we've sealed over 1,000 locations. We have any number of locations-
But that would leave 2,600, less people decide to do it on their own.
2,600 locations, you have other processes that have been utilized to close those. Some have been turned over back to the buildings already. Some locations have vacated. A number of them have started new businesses, legal businesses in location. So that number comes down even further. We, and the other locations are scheduled for the second visit as well. So the legal barriers that we have, that we have to first issue the cease and desist and then be able to go back afterwards, we have a number, excuse me, a number of locations that are scheduled for the second visit as well. And those locations will be sealed once we go for a second visit, if we find, if we find the violation, because we could find that they have now become compliant and are only dealing in illegal business at that point, which would be a successful operation either way.
Okay. I mean, I assume the ones that will do illegal business are not just the M&Ms and the potato chips that's legal. Everything else in the ones that I know are illegal. Everything else is, so I assume it's like a bodega that's doing something. That's the one that could in fact be legal down the line.
Yes, bodegas could be delis, there are a number of types-
By deli bodega, right. And the ones, my smoke shops are potatoes, potato chips, M&Ms, cannabis, and illegal tobacco. So you're not going to make much on the M&Ms and the potato chips.
A regular convenience store would be able to do an abatement process and be compliant with the law and be able to continue to operate. And Councilmember, the number that I have is 79 marijuana shops, legal marijuana shops that are, that are open in New York City.
Okay. So, so in other words, and then we did get a letter back from Deputy Mayor Phil Banks indicating that we are not going to get the list of unlicensed stores. But again, that's back to my issue. I think the public would love to know what a great job you're doing, because you've got, 3,600 is not really 3,600, because landlords are complying, individuals are not, are closing on their own, et cetera. So that's what I'm saying. We need the data. That's what we need.
There are a number of concerns, again, before, prior to confirming that there's any illegal activity. Just because somebody says somebody's selling cannabis doesn't mean that it's so. So kind of putting, exposing people to that kind of attention when they may be absolutely not in violation of any law, has serious concerns and implications for their businesses at the same time. So I, there are several operating concerns here that need to share information. But at the same time, just because somebody says you did something wrong, doesn't mean you-
No, I understand that. But where you have proof, that would be the way to share the data, where there's actual proof, where they've gone to oath, et cetera. I'm just saying it's hard to get the data. I, I think that the rate of unlicensed retailers opening has been slowing. I don't see a lot of new stores opening. Do you agree that that's, people are not opening new smoke shops?
Yes.
Okay. And I, do you know if more storefronts, I mean, I don't think they have, have opened since enforcement began? It's not my impression that they have, but I may be citywide, I don't know.
Again, I said, just to the 311 complaints in the last group that came in, they identified an additional 161 locations. So there may be new shops, there may be people that moved from one location because we sealed it, and, and re-rented another location and changed their name. So I think there's going to be as many people who are creative and breaking the law, they're going to try to find another way of operating. And that's why it's imperative that we stay vigilant. And the community's partnership is, is a big part of our being able to be effective.
Okay, certainly, you know, operating outside the door of a sealed shop is an example of that. Are referrals being made to state tax authorities to investigate civil or criminal charges, and if so, how many, and if not, why not? And are referrals being made to the Department of Finance for criminal or civil violations? Now, this might be in the more bodega, deli than in the smoke shops. I don't know.
So in the sheriff's office, we do conduct tax investigations as well. And so, again, requested you asked earlier, can we use more personnel? Absolutely. Because that would assist us in doing the follow-up investigations and broadening the tax investigations that we, that go on. We do do some joint operations with the state tax as well, as well as the offices, state cannabis management. So there are joint operations and there are separate operations that both agencies conduct.
And that's in a data spreadsheet somewhere?
Again, tax investigations, I do not, will not be a public information access to be able, those are investigations and those are confidential in any number of ways.
Okay, even if they're, in other words, referring somebody to the Department of Finance or to the state is not something that would be public information?
It doesn't, I, I don't think that it meets the needs of what you're looking for, because you're kind of hacking for an investigation, didn't say that anybody has been found guilty of any infraction.
Okay.
So I think there'd be very limitations to what can be shared in that respect.
All right. You mentioned, and the oath data shows that about 14% of violations have been dismissed as of the middle of August. Why are these cases being dismissed? It's not a large number, but what, why are they-
I mean, there have been various reasons. Again, difference interpretation of the law, there may be some interpretation of the service that was done, the format that was used. We've had forms that were used in the sheriff's office that has changed over time, based on not only litigation, but the advice by legal counsel. So we're adjusting. The law is something that is, is developing, and the challenges by the attorneys that are represented are being, becoming very creative. And therefore, that means that we have to have, change our response as well.
So you're changing your forms, you're changing the training. What are you doing differently?
A combination of both. We do change the training of what's being asked and what's being looked at, to be able to make sure that we cover the information for the oath officers, to be able to have all the information they need. And as well as the forms that we're using to make sure that we are complying with any of the objections or questions that have been creatively brought up by the attorneys representing the clients.
You have a lot of attorneys working on this for the clients. I, I'm aware. My question also though is, the person who, I believe it states that you have to mail it, you have to post it, and you have to give it to somebody who's in authority. So is that the person behind the counter? Is that the person considered the right person?
That would, in the majority of cases, be the right person. However, I believe that you may have testimony later on from some of the attorneys that will present different variations of who they believe is in charge.
Right.
So again, I think that we're adjusting to the nuances of, of how they're being defended. But again, if the people are engaged in selling illegal product and we're seizing it, the responses going back are something to be creative. We have to adjust, as well as the person who's selling it in front of the location or using a vehicle or using a stand of some kind. You have a number of online premises, premises that are online that we also need to be able to have some response to at some point, but has not been addressed yet. So I think this is evolving, and I think the law will need to evolve. And, and your support in terms of adjusting to those nuances that are being created are going to be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, because we want to get the 14%. It's not a high number. We want to get it down as much as possible.
Absolutely. We'd love to be at 100%.
Yes. How many dismissals have been due to failure to meet the five-day requirement related to the oath hearings, which was in the state, state law?
I don't know that number offhand.
Okay, can you get that to us?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Have you decreased the number of dismissals as the operation has developed? I think you have, but I was just wondering if you would agree with that.
Yes.
Okay, because you're working, how does the training work? How does that training work?
The training will also be based on new topics. So if, if a particular location presented certain challenges, it's important that the rest of the teams know that the challenges that were faced at particular locations. If it's something that has to do with something that was brought up at an oath hearing and the presentation that was made, then we will educate the staff, the team about what they're looking at and what the oath judges want more information on. So it may have been a picture that didn't quite show the right thing that they needed. So we may have to take additional pictures or take it in a different way. These are all things that are now improving as, as we're becoming more responsive to the hearings.
When I was with you, this was before the operation, it was just tobacco, but you have to list on a piece of paper all of the infractions, the flour, the gummies and so on. Is that still done, or can you do that electronically now?
No, it's still done manually. Certain violations that are issued, which are cigarettes and, and-
Tobacco.
And tobacco-related, those are automated now for the most part. However, the cannabis is strictly still in the hand process. I believe that they're working on different mechanisms to-
Who's they?
OTI. OTI has been in a number of conversations. We had a number of dialogue going back and forth about the different forms that we're required to fill out, the different reporting mandates that we have, so that we can be able to comply with the various mandates and, and try to streamline all the requests for information. Where there's common fields, common language, we're trying to do all that. And OTI has been very helpful in us trying to develop a new system.
You and the police department are both paper, manual, heavy- You and the police department are both paper, manual, heavy, crazy, got to stop. In the recent Bell Corp decision, the court determined that if the summons was dismissed, the sealing order must be lifted as well. Has this had any effect on how you serve your papers? And again, I guess back to the training issue, are you changing the training to deal with the Bell Corp decision?
Two things I would say. First, I'm not the attorneys that will represent these cases, so that would probably be more better, more proper to one of the attorneys. However, we do, I think the city has taken the position that that decision was an error. And so depending on who you listen to, they say the summons is tied to the sealing order. It's the interpretation that the sealing order is the sealing order and the summons is the summons. And so it's a separate consideration.
That's very key, I would say. Operate, the Operation Padlock to Protect granted to the sheriff's office to enforce illicit cannabis storefronts appears to be a massive undertaking, as we know. Have you created beyond the regulations new policies and procedures for deputy sheriffs and other staff related to this operation and new enforcement powers because of this large effort?
Policy and training is something that happens on a continual basis. I do not believe that there are any new procedures, except maybe educating them on new forms that were created specifically for this operation. So this operation has its own required forms that have to be filled out that are different than what we were using in the past. And we had to adjust many of them to address many of the questions that are being asked. So again, it's gone through a process.
Is that something, I know with the police department, they do support giving to the public the manual that, you know, guides every police officer. You know that from your past. Is there, could you share in the future with us the training manual, whatever training manual you're using for this new operation?
Well, we have a patrol guide, and if there's any particular-
Well, you have your own patrol guide, but is that-
Yes.
So that's what is used in terms of the training?
That is used, which is generally for training. For particular, for this program, then I would evaluate what we are using currently. And if you, if there's a way of sharing that information, I think that'd be something that we can discuss.
We would like to see that information, that training. And then I think in terms of the paperwork, you are working with OTI to come up with something that would hopefully be even more accurate. If it was online, I mean, more, less manual, it would seem to me that it would be more online. All right. And then just finally, I think, you know, the article in the Daily News today was not very complimentary, I'm afraid. Do you have any response to that? It's not directly related to this, except that I also think that the Department of Investigation does a lot of the work that you might have to do. So I'm just thinking that, you know, the DOI does a good job. I mean, you may not need somebody to do that in your office. So how do you respond to that?
Personnel issues are not something I necessarily want to discuss at a hearing in this forum. However, the need to be able to do investigations in our office is extremely necessary considering the historical perspective of what's gone on in the sheriff's office. So there is a need to have somebody in that functionality.
Okay, that's your answer. Any other questions? No? Thank you very much, and we thank you for your testimony.
Thank you so much.
Next panel, when you're, will be Ingrid Semenovik from the New York City Deputy Sheriff Benevolent Associations, Fernie Canteen from DSBA, and Stephen McQuade, also from the Deputy Sheriff's Benevolent Association. Thank you very much. You may begin whenever you wish.
Good morning, Sheriffwoman Brewer, Chairman Brennan, and the distinguished members of your respected committees. My name is Ingrid Semenovik. I am the president of the New York City Deputy Sheriff Benevolent Association. Our approximately one-hundred-and-forty members provide critical essential service to New York residents every day. Our deputy sheriffs enforce both civil and criminal matters. The New York City Sheriff's Office is composed of three sections, operations, intelligence, and support. The deputies working within our Bureau of Criminal Investigation investigate city tax violations, real property, larceny, defrauds, cigarette tax, cannabis, synthetic narcotics enforcement, and other offenses. Deputy sheriffs assigned to the civil enforcement duties are referred as law enforcement bureau personnel. LEB deputies perform a wide array of tasks such as evictions, warrants of arrest, orders of commit, and other seizures and sales of properties pursuant to judicial matter. We are the chief law enforcement agency for both civil and family court matters. Businesses and individuals that own the city money pursuant to unpaid city tax warrants, environmental control board summonses, and fire and health code violations fines are targeted for enforcement actions. LEB deputies also serve a wide variety of legal processes within orders, with orders of protections being our, being considered our highest priority. I mention these essential responsibilities and essential services because most New Yorkers really have no understanding of the wide range of services we perform every day. That is because to most New Yorker, our members are largely associated with COVID-19 enforcement and as most recent time with ongoing operation shutdown of illegal cannabis shop known as Operation Padlock. Overall, the sheriff's office is a very unique law enforcement agency with powers and authority unlike any other city agency. This is the same very authorities Sheriff Anthony Miranda is bestow with and the very same powers he has abused often enough during his short tenure. Today's hearing focused on the implementation of New York cannabis enforcement laws with Operation Padlock. With that central focus of the city's cannabis enforcement, to be clear, our union fully support enforcing all New York laws and ensuring the safety, security, and well-being of all New Yorkers. Our members often put themselves in great risk during our various enforcement proceedings. But I am here today to shine a light on the weight our members have been negatively impacted, mis treated by Sheriff Anthony Miranda as a result of his poor leadership at the sheriff's office, which extends far beyond the public role as the pad shop photo app enforcer. From day one, Sheriff Anthony Miranda made it clear, made it crystal clear that he had no interest in respecting the rights of our members for being simply human being nevertheless as labor union members. This hearing is actually the very first opportunity we have been given to share our concerns and to have our voices heard publicly and in a complete transparency. Sheriff Anthony Miranda has spent the past two years establishing a consistent pattern of retaliation against his own workforce, punishing, threatening, and disciplining us and those who dare to challenge his occasional questionable orders and ways of doing things. He has also done the same to the union advocating, he has also done the same to the union for advocating for the rights of our members. I can speak expertly on this matter as my boy and myself have been a victim of his retaliatory actions. Throughout the implementation of Operation Padlock, we have raised the alarm on the heavy strain this operation will take on our workforce that is already stretched thin. He has recently taken the flexibility to having several tours to cover the daily operation to just two mandated tour of duty between six AM and midnight. Our members are now working upwards of twelve hours per day and are given just a few hours to go home, sleep, and return to work. Sheriff Miranda, overselling his focus on cannabis shop closing has forced our deputies to go from four days work week to five days or six days work weeks, with overnight tours forced to work on Saturdays and focus excessively on the weekends. He has also forced deputies returning from lighter duties injuries to work eight hours tour along with deputies working ten-hour tour, all because of his over-deploy of personnel to shut down cannabis store. The sheriff's portrayal of the shutdown of cannabis shop is also incredibly misleading. It is, in a nutshell, many stores are reopening after being shut down, yet our workforce is being pulled in time to time again to perform this closing that seems to take more priority over the critical needs New Yorkers have, particularly those in situations where lives could be in the line. For example, from May first, 2024 to September sixth, 2024, there were over four thousand seven, four thousand seven hundred pad shop inspections. Over the same period of time, we have received over seven thousand four hundred orders of protections for victims of domestic violence. As with any city-wide public safety initiative, a surge of manpower is required to successively execute the needs specific to that initiative. If the sheriff truly cares about the public needs, he will have committed to increasing our staffing levels in order to both carry out Operation Padlock while simultaneously carrying out orders of protections, evictions proceedings, drugs illegals, drugs and illegal e-bags confiscation, and other seizures. We have received hundreds of complaints from New Yorkers demanding to know what is going on with their orders of protections. Since when, since when does a cannabis shop closing take priority over safeguarding the lives of women who are victimized over by domestic violence? We are losing deputies who cannot continue to work under a sheriff who has zero regards for their employment rights as well as well-being. We have lost approximately forty-three deputies in the last two years alone while onboarding about twenty-six. Some of those deputies have left because of the toll of being exposed to seized marijuana, which is stored unsafely improperly at a warehouse in Queens. And when deputies complain about the toll these drug seizures take on their health, their supervisors tell them to just deal with it. The New York, the New York Daily News has recently reported on these conditions. In another sign, in another sign of Miranda's personnel mismanagement, he recently hired two new chiefs, Willie Perez and Mr. Egan, for a combined salary of approximately three-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars. Those salaries could have been used to hire at least eight new deputies over the next two years to carry out many of the essential services New Yorkers depend on instead of funding two bureaucrats whose sole function is to further diminish the rights of our members and decrease the quality of their working conditions. We are calling on this committee to use its authority to take the following actions immediately. First and foremost, we are calling on the committee to investigate our personnel deployment and examine why deputies are being overly deployed on certain operations at the expense of others. Second, we invite the committee to conduct an order into the storage of seizures contraband to compel the sheriff to overhaul how cannabis and other taxes are impacting the health and safety of our members. Third, we need a greater community accountability into the operation of the sheriff's office. The sheriff should have no regulatory, the sheriff should have to regulatory report his office performance indicating, just like every other agency does, either directly on the sheriff's website or on the management report, both, of course, public facing. For too long, Sheriff Miranda has operating his office like his own personal freedom, even as far as traveling to work in his city vehicle with lights and sirens when there is no emergency. The real emergency is the way my members have been bullied, mis treated, or while trembling on their rights as labor union members. I thank this committee for your time. I'll take any questions if anybody have.
Thank you very much. Is anybody else testifying, or are you? Okay, all right. So thank you so much. We've been joined by Councilmember Joseph. Thank you very much. Did you have any questions, councilmember? Okay. Well, I certainly know of your concerns, and we take them very seriously. There, one question I had, do you know for sure that there's a new class that is starting in October? Have you heard any, that was what was reported earlier? Are you aware of this?
That's not accurate. I understand, we have three people doing background investigation. We did physical activity tests at the beginning of the year. They rushed through a very simple background investigation on this individual. Then the three individuals that they were doing background investigations, one is out on maternity leave and another one has been pulled to do investigation, which is basically just to view cameras. And the other, there's only one person doing investigation. There's no way that she could do a full background investigation on anybody, just one person. It's about a hundred, a hundred and eighty-two people that we need to do background. So there's no way. The only way that I could see us having an academy in October is if we don't do our due diligence and we just onboard people without being fully vested.
How long is the academy for sheriffs? How long the program is that?
Since Sheriff Miranda got here, there is no real time limit. Our academy used to be six months. After he came, I know I requested a labor management meeting, because our academy started going to ten weeks, twelve weeks, and then there's no academy. Since he got here, we only have had two graduation. One was, the academy started before his arrival, and the other academy, he graduated close to a year later, if not a year later. We have individuals that start an academy after he got here, and he have never graduated.
And you mentioned also, go ahead, I'm sorry.
He doesn't believe in graduating the deputies. He believes that if he doesn't graduate you, you're going to do a seal toll when you're told. And that's why he's not having formal graduations.
Okay. And you mentioned that forty-three have left while only onboarded twenty-six. That's in the last couple of years. That was an example of what the challenges are.
Yes. So since he left, we have lost close to forty-three members. The one that have come in, they came before him. He have only brought in five people.
Five deputies.
Five deputies.
Okay. And then the other question I have is, you mentioned the, I mean, I'm certainly very familiar with orders of protection. We work with domestic violence persons in our office every day. People bring horrible situations. So you're saying, what would be an example of what's not getting done because of Operation Padlock?
We don't have enough personnel. I could tell you in Richmond County, I only have five deputies for the entire county. In New York County, about twelve, thirteen deputies for the entire county. We supervise maybe fifteen. The Bronx is about twenty-four for the entire county. The amount of work that we are receiving, we don't have the personnel to do it. So we're not, we're not allowed to do our due diligence, and we may do one attempt, two attempts to serve the order protection and go ahead and close the case and send it back to the courts. And in some occasions, we'll go, and if the individual is not there, we tell the victim, if you are in such a fear, just lock yourself in a room, call the police, and have him serve the order protection, because we won't be able to come back.
Okay. Councilmember Holden? Councilmember Holden?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Question on, you said where the pot is stored in a warehouse, it's dangerous, right? The conditions aren't good. Tell me, what are they experiencing, people who go in there, you're certainly officers that go in there? What are they complaining about? The air, the dizziness?
Well, it recently changed, but at the beginning, we used to store the cannabis in the vehicles. We used to store them in offices. They used to be everywhere. I know at one point, it was close to where the auditors, which are considered civilians, and when they started complaining, Sheriff Miranda told the guy that was in charge of evidence, well, put it in your office, put it everywhere, just get it away from there so the auditors don't complain. So, at one point, I went to his office, and he was sitting in bags and bags of contrabands. And he was complaining about coughing blood. A lot of people complained of headaches, nauseous, and when they stay away from the office for maybe a day or two, then they feel better. But when they come back, they still spirit the same system.
Has any agency, the Health Department, anybody checked the air in that location?
That's one of the retaliation. When he started sending emails and requesting all that stuff, he got retaliated on, and he eventually got moved from that agent, from that office. We defiled multiple complaints, a few with patch. Patch came and filed that our complaints were substantiated.
Now, you know the pressures on, because since the marijuana, cannabis became legal, there's a lot of pressure on the sheriff's office. So, you understand that he's getting pressure from one end, and you guys are getting, obviously, more work.
Yes.
And do you think, now, I've called for the mayor to double the size of the sheriff's office because you can see that they're being stretched thinly, and many of them, you said they're working now five days a week, six days. In the past, they used to work four days?
Yes.
And so, now people are working, are they working any 24-hour shifts?
You could work, now you're working five days. He wanted to have five days, eight hours tour, but now you're working five days, 10, 12, 14, 16 hours, and sometimes even longer tour. Because when you have an arrest, you have to stay with that arrest until you complete it. And I'm with you, we need more members. But the problems that we have is with the mismanagement. Everybody that he's bringing aboard, it's not being beneficial for us. He brought, so far, he's brought up close to 12 people. They're not capable of doing the background investigation to onboard more members. They're not capable of training anybody because they don't even have the qualification. Mr. Perez, who is going to be the chief of investigation, he doesn't even have a background in investigation. So, what are we doing here? You're bringing all these people that are pretty much useless to our agency and our department. If you were to onboard people that will cooperate to our growth and us doing more efficient and doing more work, by all means, I hope that we could double, triple our size as soon as possible because we desperately need it in order to be able to do everything that we need to do in the city.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Have you reported any of this misconduct to the Department of Investigation? And if so, have they done any follow-up? Sometimes they don't tell you what they're doing, but have they been communicative at all?
Yes, I'm aware that multiple complaints have been filed with DOI in the past about a year and a half, two years, but there has been no follow-ups.
And then also, as you know, we have a bill that would have more data available through 311 because I believe, I mean, I'm the author of the Open Data Bill, I feel very strongly about data. So, my question is, do you know if that data that now goes via email to the sheriff, does it get back to 311? Does it get used? Do you have any sense of what happens when the data goes to the sheriff's office? Because now it's only available through the sheriff.
Most of the, the way the agency is operating now, there's no transparency. Even us that are in the office, a lot of things we don't know. We don't know where the data is coming from. We don't know, we do know who is putting the data together. It's one of the people that he onboarded, but we don't know how they go about picking and choosing which...
How they use the data, you don't know?
Yes, yes. We don't know that.
Okay. You need to add anything?
We don't know the data, we don't know where we're going, we don't know whether they're picking all these stores to go inspecting. I am aware that sometimes we do go and do an inspection at a store, and even if the store is found with no contraband, we keep going back and back to that same store. And I'm also aware that he targets certain persons, not, it's not being spread throughout everybody.
I want to thank you very much. I am very aware of your concerns. We will follow up, and we congratulate you for being a great union leader.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next panel is Elena Turnquist from the Independent Budget Office, and Brian Kane Go right ahead. Thank you very much for being here. We love IBO. Go ahead.
Hi, good morning, Chair Brannon, Chair Brewer, and members of the Finance Committee and Oversight and Investigation Committee. I am Elena Turnquist, Economic Development Budget and Policy Analyst for the New York City Budget Office, Independent Budget Office, IBO. I am joined here today by my colleague, Brian Kane, Assistant Director of Housing, Environment, and Infrastructure. In August of 2023, IBO published a report estimating the potential size of a mature legal cannabis market in New York City. In May of 2024, IBO updated these estimations using more recent data. IBO also recently published a report discussing important changes from the last session of the state legislature, including changes to cannabis relevant to the city. My testimony today will highlight key takeaways from IBO's cannabis-focused research. IBO has been estimating the potential size and fiscal impact of New York City's cannabis market for over a year. Our most recent update in May 2024 estimated that New York City's legal cannabis market could, at maturity, yield between $33 million and $200 million in annual tax revenue for the city. Notably, a variety of factors impact this large range, including the pace of opening of licensed cannabis dispensaries, consumer preferences for switching to the legal market, enforcement of unlicensed dispensaries, and consumer preferences for different types of cannabis products. For example, edibles are a higher-priced product than typical flour and yield greater tax revenue. IBO recognizes that this is a wide-ranging estimate. IBO's estimate relies on data from other states, looking both at average per capita sales and the price per ounce of cannabis sold. The low end of our estimate, $33 million, assumes a low amount of cannabis sold per capita at a low price, and the high end of our estimate, $200 million, assumes a higher amount of cannabis sold per capita at a high price. IBO's estimates are also based on consumption patterns and prices seen in other states with at least five years of legal adult-use cannabis sales. When the rollout of the legal market is completed, IBO would expect to see cannabis sales in the middle of this range. It is difficult to pinpoint a future market size for several reasons. New York State's unique requirements for retail licenses have resulted in a slower rollout of the legal market than in most other states. The presence of unlicensed dispensaries has also slowed growth of cannabis revenue because any sales made at these stores are obviously untaxed. Even if the city is successful in closing all unlicensed cannabis retail operations, consumers may still choose to continue patronizing unlicensed sellers, for example, those in the legacy industry, rather than purchase from cannabis state-licensed dispensaries. IBO expects that as more licensed dispensaries open across the city, more unlicensed stores close, the pace of cannabis tax revenue collection will increase. Importantly, the amount of potential cannabis tax revenue that the city could eventually see from the mature legal market is small in comparison to other sources of city tax revenue. IBO projects approximately $85 billion in total city tax revenues in 2028. Even with the highest cannabis projection of about $200 million, this would only amount to about 0.24% of the total city revenues. This fluctuation in cannabis, thus fluctuations in cannabis revenue are not a make-or-break factor in creating or closing budget gaps. While the fiscal impact of unlicensed smoke shops and cannabis revenue is relatively small, unlicensed smoke shops likely affect the ability of licensed dispensaries to compete and succeed in the city, and the sale of unlicensed cannabis and tobacco products creates concern from a consumer protection and public health vantage point. Cannabis tax revenue collections to date have fallen short of IBO's estimate, but IBO expects collections to increase in the years ahead. As of the 2025 executive budget, New York City collected $2.4 million in cannabis tax in fiscal year 2024. IBO's most recent estimate, or most recent tax forecast predicts collections of $37 million by fiscal year 2028, which is higher than IOMB's forecast of $30 million in that same year. The legal market has grown dramatically so far in the current calendar year from 12 licensed dispensaries opening in all of 2023 to over 50 opening so far in 2024. Currently, there are around 80 licensed dispensaries operating in New York City. Beyond tax revenue from cannabis sales, the city may also see additional revenue from community reinvestment grants, which will be awarded to communities disproportionately impacted by cannabis prohibition. These grants will be funded out of a portion of the state's cannabis tax revenue, not the city's. The Cannabis Advisory Board announced that it will begin awarding these grants in 2024, although none have yet been granted. The potential amount of grant revenue which could be received is uncertain and would be devoted to the grant-specific project or program. This is different from the general cannabis revenues, which go towards the city's general fund and can be used for any purpose. The Office of Cannabis Management annually publishes a report with details on funds and availability and potential distribution of these grants. Next, moving to Albany updates. The 2025 state budget contained items relevant to cannabis taxation and enforcement in New York City. First, the enacted budget expanded and clarified the powers of local law enforcement to respond to unlicensed sales of cannabis products. Local law enforcement authorities, as we've discussed today, can now immediately shutter a business for up to a year if they find the business is both selling cannabis without a license and is deemed as posing an imminent threat to public health and safety. As mentioned earlier, IBO expects that unlicensed cannabis dispensaries continuing to be padlocked or closing voluntarily cannabis will result in cannabis tax revenue by the city increasing. The enacted budget also repealed the cannabis potency tax, which was based on the THC content of cannabis products sold by processors to retail dispensaries. In place of the potency tax, the state introduced a flat 9% tax on wholesale cannabis sales from processors to distributors. This tax will not directly affect city cannabis tax collections, since city cannabis tax is based solely on retail sales within the city. The city receives 4% of taxable retail sales of cannabis that take place within New York City. IBO will continue to monitor the legal cannabis markets' growth and cannabis tax revenue collections. Thank you for your time, and we welcome questions.
Thank you. I have one quick question, just to explain to, I think, the public because how the tax is collected, how much goes to the state, how much goes to the city? And if there's any, that's a different type of process, I think, than most taxes. Can you explain that?
Yeah, so cannabis is taxed differently in different states. So, in New York, we have a tax that is placed at the time of purchase in retail, so 9% of that goes to the state, and 4% of that goes to the city or the locality in which the purchase is made. So, overall, when you go yourself to buy from a state-licensed dispensary, you'll have a 13% sales tax on that purchase. The other tax we discussed is between wholesalers and distributors, and that is that base 9% tax. That's something that most consumers would not see or experience because they'll be purchasing in the store.
Your numbers are, I mean, it's hard to know. We have 79, I think we heard today, legal at this moment. So, do you have some sense of what numbers you project to be legal, to come up with the numbers that you came up with?
Yeah, so our, because a dispensary can sell, you know, the size of a legal dispensary can really range, so some dispensaries do a lot of sales, some will do less. It depends on probably the location that you're in within the city, as well as the size of your overall operation. So, our projections are more about looking at what consumer patterns are. So, per capita, how much is the average person going to consume in a year, and what price is that product being sold at? And that'll give us a sense of the overall size of the market. We can then take, you know, the number of dispensaries and, you know, divide by the number of dispensaries to get an average number. But right now, we would expect to say that dispensaries are probably potentially doing more sales than they would do once there is a fuller rolled-out market. I believe from OCM, the number of dispensaries that are expected in New York City is supposed to be around 400. So, right now, if we're at around 80, we would still expect to see, you know, continued openings. And again, that's up to OCM. They could go above 400, below, but that's the number that we've heard.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you. I have one great story. So, the new cannabis legal opens in my district, and of course, the people next door, large building complain. And, you know, I say, explain that it's a good thing. So, I'm in there, and of course, I swear to God, half of the customers who are in there are from that same building. So, you never know. Thank you very much for your testimony.
All right, thank you.
I now open the hearing for public testimony. You have to read this whole stupid thing. "I remind members of the public that this is a government proceeding, and the decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times," and I thank you because you've been very quiet. "The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the sergeant-at-arms for inclusion in the hearing record." If you wish to speak in today's hearing, I think those of you who wanted to have already filled out an appearance card, but if somebody wants to and hasn't, please do so. Do it with a sergeant-at-arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you have three minutes to speak at the today's oversight hearing topic, which of course is about the cannabis enforcement laws and proposed Intro 557A and Intro 981. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy to the sergeant-at-arms. You may also send written testimony, for those of you who are listening, testimony@council.nyc.gov within 72 hours of the close of this hearing. Like I said earlier, audio and video recordings will not be accepted. And for in-person, if there's anyone here who wants to, please come up to the table once your name has been called, but you have to fill out the SLIP. Is there anybody here from the in-person panel? And it looks like David Schwartz from Wholesalers, Anard Haig, Protest Against Illegals, Lance Lazaro, who's a business owner, Nadia Kanta, who's a convenience store, Jeffrey Hoffman and Michael Zaito. So, why don't we take the first five people, which include David Schwartz, Anard Haig, Lance Lascaro, is that four? Yep. And Nidia Knats. And then do those two later, because there's too many people.
I'd like to start. My name is Lance Lazaro. I'm not a business owner. I'm an attorney that represents a lot of the smoke shops. I'm here today because you've created a statute, and I'm not faulting you for creating the statute, but you've created a statute that gives way too much power in the hands of the sheriff, and you've created a system of fighting these cases, which basically is flawed. And I think the public needs to know about it, and I think the city council needs to know about it. Most of the shops that I represent are... Most of the shops that I represent are bodegas that are legitimate shops that are in areas that most Walgreens will never enter into, most supermarkets will never enter into. So it's nice when Sheriff Miranda, and I don't call him Sheriff Miranda anymore, I call him Judge Miranda, comes before this, comes before this city council and tries to argue that there's some type of mechanism he uses, but there is absolutely no mechanism. I've represented, I've represented many stores, and many of them, and I've also been in part of the bell decision. I was the attorney who argued that. And I can probably enlighten you as to some of the issues you asked about, Councilwoman Brewer. But what I will say is that I had a store that was closed down a few days ago, that was caught with three pre-rolls in their entire store, where the entire store was legitimate, and instead of the sheriff just issuing a summons and not closing it down, it now has to wait for a hearing for five days. Excuse me, we actually did the hearing in that particular case. The summons was dismissed, the hearing officer found no unlicensed activity, he recommended that the sealing order be rescinded. We now have to wait for Sheriff Miranda, and I call him Judge Miranda, whether or not to uphold that decision. Now, think about that. A store can be selling 99.9% of their products that are legitimate, and they get caught with three marijuana pre-rolls, and yet the sheriff is sealing that place down for at least five days, and even if you win the hearing and you're found not guilty of unlicensed activity, and the sealing order is recommended to be lifted by the hearing officer, four days later, we get a decision by Judge Miranda, I'm not going along with it. I'm keeping you closed for a year. So what is the store left to do at this stage? To bring an Article 78 proceeding. Is it a cheap proceeding? Absolutely not. You have to pay an attorney. Most judges in the city of New York will put these hearings off for a month or two before you get it. The only judge who actually looks at these cases is Judge Kerrigan in Queens County, who actually has looked at the law and says, you've appointed the sheriff Miranda as the judge, jury, and executioner, because he has made these hearings a farce, because even if you win at the hearings, he can overrule it, and the only recourse you're left is to do an Article 78 proceeding, which can take months to get to. And even when you win in the Article 78 proceeding, the city can automatically appeal it, and then it goes to the appellate division. So these store owners that are actually serving communities that the Walgreens will never enter into, that have a 99.9% legitimate product, are getting shut down. Here's another one.
You need to, you need to wrap up. Go ahead.
One bag of marijuana. The entire store had legitimate products, closed down. One from yesterday, where they came back for a second inspection, they didn't close the store down. Three hours later, they showed up at the store and closed it down. The seizure report says zero marijuana recovered. I have a list of 15 to 20 cases, and I'd like you to ask Sheriff Miranda at some point, how many stores have won the summonses? Have the summonses been dismissed, and the sealing orders have been recommended to be lifted, that he has overruled, even though he's not participating in these hearings? This committee has done away with due process in how the, how the statute was written, and if the federal lawsuit ends up holding that this statute is unconstitutional, the monetary damage will be so much more significant to the city and state of New York if this statute is ruled unconstitutional. The way the statute is written, it, it, it puts way too much power in the hands of the sheriff. It's a complete denial of due process, and the way that the sheriff is administering it. I've caught him on six cases, and I think you should hear this.
Okay, we got your point, but we're very aware of this situation.
How about this, six stores that lost at oath. They're supposed to render a decision within four days of the hearing, the sheriff. The decisions came anywhere from one day to a week late. He backdates the letter and keeps the store closed. When I call him out on it, that I'm going to sue him, all six stores get left, get reopened. There's power corrupts, and, and the way the statute is written has, has really not dealt with the, the cannabis stores, or the stores that are strictly cannabis stores.
I got it, I got it.
You're shutting down numerous legitimate base.
I understand what you're saying. Thank you very much, sir. Next.
Nadia Knats, attorney as well. I also represent many convenience stores, bodegas, and smoke shops, also conducting the hearings on the defense side at oath. There are, there are two points that I wanted to address that were not addressed, were not asked by the sheriff. The products that were laid out, all were products that he alleges were directed towards children. As a mother myself, of course, that's a concern for any parent. However, there was absolutely no questioning of him of how many stores have documented sales of cannabis to minors. I maintain, in my, in my office, we've had absolutely not a single one of a documented sale of cannabis to any minor. There was also allegations of people reporting to 311 of persons getting sick, adults and children getting sick. What are the numbers of those, that, what are the numbers looking like for those? Again, in all of the cases that I've done, absolutely none of those allegations. And those are the fronts that are being purported and, and being brought in front of the city council and the public to appear as though these closures are not somehow, you know, otherwise targeted or based. We maintain that they definitely are. With respect to asset recovery, that's my main point here today, is that in each and every store, I believe the question was asked and not really properly answered also, that in each and every location, there is significant cash being removed from registers. I even have a client who had a $10,000 certified check being removed. It was not until I filed an internal affairs investigation against NYPD that there was ever any record of that certified check being removed, along with $7,000 or $8,000. I have other stores where there's $25,000 being removed, absolutely no documentation. All of the property is being invoiced by the NYPD, except cash. And when we report into internal affairs to NYPD, that there, we want to know where is the cash, especially in the case where, where there's a dismissal, where there's dismissal, no violation found, the store can be reopened, where is the money? There is absolutely no method to locate the money, and we're being directed that it is, it is the sheriff who has the money. So we then have to open two different claims with internal affairs and the sheriff's department, each agency going like this, the other one took it, or the other one vouchered it, the other one's responsible for it, and no method to recover all this money. But we maintain that there's many stores here that, what is the process for forfeiture? What is the basis for forfeiture? Why is the cash being not held at safekeeping, especially in businesses where there's more than, like Mrs. Lazaro said, 99% of lawful activity? These are not criminal proceedings, and when we offer any criminal case law, they, they knock it down patently, saying these are administrative hearings, and any criminal case law is not relevant. So what's the basis for the forfeiture? For a product that's legal in New York State, I maintain that it's unlicensed, but the characterization of some of these sales as being illegal drug sales is just not accurate and not correct. So that's one of the issues we want to address here today, and also that this city council should really look at the purpose of the statute, is to, is the closure of the stores, is it accomplishing what we're looking to do? Is it just driving cannabis into the streets? And many of you have cited here today that it is driving cannabis to the corners, it is increasing gang violence and, and other types of violence, you're driving cannabis to the cars. If the market supported four or five shops in one street, where did that consumer appetite go? I maintain it didn't go away. So the, the, are we solving the issue here in New York City? I, I don't believe that we are. I believe that all we're doing is punting it, we're demonizing certain businesses, we're closing them down, we're affecting, but we're not really solving the problem.
You need to wrap up.
Thank you. We're not really solving the problem. The problem, the way to solve the problem is to give a conditional license to the convenience stores, the bodegas, whoever have been historically the ones who sold tobacco, who sold vapes, who sold cigarettes, any type of smoking product, is to give some type of conditional license. Instead of saying that this needs to be shut down, absolutely not marketed at all, maybe we need to relook at how we do the licensing.
Thank you for your testimony. Sir?
Thank you, Chair. I'm actually, I'm with the wrong group. I'm a, my name is Anor Luhk. I'm a business owner. I've been in this, I have a business in the city in Chelsea 26 years. The last five, six, or four years ago, a lot of illegal stores started opening. I lost one, I had another store in 42, and I closed that. I've been suffering because, because of the illegal store. I have a legal tobacco store. I've been suffering for all these years. My business going down and down because people sell out of state cigarette for $10, $9, and my cigarette is $18. Nobody won my cigarette. I've been suffering all these years. I had to take SBA loan, quarter million dollars, to run my store. I've been suffering through the COVID, and illegal store been opening left and right, north of me, south of me, all over the places. Thank God, they closed some of them, but mostly still open most of them. They closed today, seven days later, they open again. One of the store, they changed the name, they open again. Police, sheriff came four, five times, that store is still open. They stealing my business. So I'm in a wrong aisle, but all I have to say, please close the illegal stores.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Thank you very much, panel. We're taking, we're very aware, we're taking all questions and comments very seriously. So thank you.
Absolutely not.
Okay, the last in person are Michael Zaxu and David Schwartz. And Jeffrey Hoffman.
Good afternoon, members of the city council. My name is Michael Zeitzv. I'm the academic director of the Business of Cannabis Degree Programs at LIAM College in Midtown Manhattan. I'd like to begin by expressing my support for the initiatives being proposed today and recognizing the progress made over the past year to address illicit cannabis stores in our city. However, I must emphasize that these positive steps are nowhere close to enough. We need to take a more comprehensive approach if we truly want to tackle the challenges we're facing. The continued proliferation of illicit cannabis stores, which have several advantages over legal dispensaries, such as no advertising restrictions or proximity protections, is largely due to delays at the state level, with the Office of Cannabis Management being understaffed and slow to get licensed dispensaries open. These illicit stores are not only undermining the legal market, but also pose a significant public safety risk. Some of my students have shared the alarming reports that some of these shops sell much more than cannabis, including illicit narcotics and other dangerous substances. While I encourage the city and state to consider allowing some illicit operators of these stores to transition to the legal market, or at least create some process for integration, as opposed to criminalization, which we know from the city's infamous cannabis history does more harm than good, this transition must be carefully managed. It can only happen after those who have applied and received legal permits to operate have had the opportunity to open, which, as we know, has been slow. Finally, and perhaps most importantly, there is a critical need for more public education around safe and responsible cannabis use. We need to ensure that the public, especially young people, public school teachers, middle school teachers, healthcare professionals, and senior citizens who are increasingly using cannabis as medicine, are aware of the real fact behind cannabis, its risks and its benefits. Without education, the potential for misuse and harm increases significantly, especially with unregulated stores everywhere with illicit, untested product easily available. I urge the city council to consider a public education campaign focused on cannabis safety, responsible use, and harm reduction. Who's responsible for creating and distributing curriculum on cannabis safety for public schools? I sense that it's severely lacking today. Additionally, I think the city should require continuing education for healthcare professionals to make sure that they're equipped with the latest information on cannabis use, harm reduction, and how to consult patients effectively. These education initiatives would not only protect vulnerable populations, but also encourage cannabis consumers to shop in the legal, regulated market. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeffrey Hoffman. I'm an attorney here in New York City. My law firm focuses entirely on legal New York cannabis, and we have hundreds of clients in the legal cannabis industry, both here in the city and across the state. While I've prepared longer written comments for your review, which I've shared with you, I wanted to share this brief assessment of the state of New York cannabis with you in person, both addressing enforcement and two other critical issues that I believe need to be addressed. As to enforcement, the efforts are finally having an impact, but there is a long way to go. While a number of illicit stores have been shut down, there is still a huge number of illicit stores open across the city, and as has been discussed here earlier today, we have now entered the cat and mouse part of the program. Illicit stores are remaining closed during the day and reopening at night in order to avoid the enforcement efforts, while others are cutting the padlocks with the sheriff puts on their doors and reopening within days and sometimes even hours of being shut down. You are on the right path. Do not let your initial efforts result in complacency. To that end, I strongly encourage the city to set up a regular dialogue with the members of the cannabis bar here in the city. We attorneys are on the front lines of what is happening, and we can help you head off problems and craft solutions to issues that you will not be aware of until it is too late. For example, we in the cannabis bar have been saying for over two years that strong enforcement measures would be required to have a significant impact on illicit cannabis businesses. This is not Monday morning quarterbacking. We were saying this during practice on Thursday. I encourage the city to create a standing task force, perhaps under an expanded Cannabis NYC and the excellent work that DeShida Dawson and her team are doing, to coordinate efforts on the issues which will impact the cannabis industry here. Next, we need to revisit the concept of 24-hour nightlife districts in the city. At one point, the Office of Nightlife explored this, and it's a concept being deployed in other cities around the world, and I believe it's an idea whose time has come for us here in New York City. Most significantly, while New York's cannabis regulations generally prevent sales of cannabis from 2:00 AM to 8:00 AM, they go on to say that this is true, quote, "unless given express written permission by such municipality, or the municipality passes a local law authorizing it to operate during such hours." Hence, we could enable such stores to be open 24 hours in specific districts established for nightlife. This would be a game-changing aspect for nightlife in our city. Finally, and perhaps most importantly, we need to consider all of the existing and emerging justice issues related to cannabis legalization in New York, namely expungement and employment. We must assist all city residents in clearing their records of cannabis convictions, and we need to focus on bringing real economic opportunity to those that were impacted by anti-cannabis enforcement. While there will be thousands of cannabis licenses in New York, there will be hundreds of thousands of cannabis-related jobs. This is where we need to focus our efforts, and I discuss this in more detail in my written comments. In closing, I again want to thank you for inviting me to speak here today. I have often said that New Amsterdam is the new Amsterdam. We have a unique opportunity to be the cannabis capital of the world here in New York City, and I look forward to working with all of you to make that happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much. We'll now turn to virtual panelists. For virtual panelists, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant-at-arms will set the timer and give you the go-ahead to begin for three minutes. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. So we will first call on Tony Smith, and then Dave Nick Poncy and Jacqueline Tellis. Let's start with Tony Smith.
You may begin.
Good afternoon. Thank you, chairs and members of the council, for the opportunity to testify. My name is Tony Smith. I'm the New York State Director at the Drug Policy Alliance, which led the work to pass the MRTA, establishing a pioneering framework for a fair and diverse cannabis industry in New York that intentionally did not follow the model most favorable to big business interests. Over the past two years, we've seen a concerted effort by well-funded lobbyists and large cannabis corporations threaten to undermine the law's social equity goals. By pushing a narrative of disaster and dysfunction, which has come to a head this year, and framing the law as a failure, these entities are setting the groundwork to reshape the market to their advantage. But since its inception, the MRTA has broken national records, and implementation of New York's cannabis market looks intentionally different than other states. 95% of our retail market is small business. New York has doubled the number of majority-black-owned dispensaries nationwide. Nearly half of adult-use dispensaries are majority-minority-owned, and roughly 90% of adult-use retail licenses are minority- and women-owned businesses, well above the national estimates. These successes are the result of a commitment to swimming against the tide of racial capitalism. As you address concerns with the market, it is critical to ensure enforcement steers clear of criminalization, and that adjustments to the market remain tailored to specific issues and couched within the broader goals and successes of the MRTA. We appreciate the council's attention to reporting systems that help to capture a fuller picture of the market. 311 call logs were an important tool in addressing discriminatory policing before passage of the MRTA. Now, we can use 311 to monitor the cannabis market through a civil lens, as we do other types of non-compliant businesses. So as we gain a fuller picture of the market, we also need a more robust office to provide leadership coordination and oversight of the industry, including oversight of local cannabis tax revenue. Today's hearing, I think, highlights the need for more centralized information and oversight. While Cannabis NYC is doing some of this work, we ask the council to explore the establishment of a separate cannabis agency with commission-level leadership to break down silos and provide necessary support to accomplish these goals. And we are going to follow up with fuller written comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Dave Nikpontzki.
Your time has begun.
Good afternoon to the chair and committee members. My name is David Nikpontzki, and I am the CEO of Freshly Baked NYC, a licensed dispensary located in Arthur Avenue in Bronx's Little Italy. I also serve as a board member of the New York Cannabis Retail Association. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this committee testimony. Since we all know the problems with unlicensed cannabis retail sales, I'm not going to dwell on the problem itself, other than to say it continues to be significant. Enforcement efforts, while certainly welcome, are alarmingly insufficient in responsiveness to cannabis reports, to resources allocated to enforcement, and to the general scale of the enforcement operations. For example, nearly all of the unlicensed stores near us that were previously padlocked immediately reopened within three days, and there are actually more unlicensed operators around our legal dispensary now than there were four months ago when we began recording them. Further details of this and of the problem itself can be found in my submitted written testimony. Given my limited time, I'm going to focus on my recommendations to make enforcement meaningful and powerful. First, improve communication and cooperation with licensees. We need a more direct, two-way communication channel with enforcement teams. Dropping reports into a 311 black hole, while useful to initiate reporting, is going to be opaque and demoralizing. We want to be able to track the status of reported businesses and receive updates on follow-up enforcement actions. Further, licensees are eager to assist with enforcement. We are willing to provide photo and video evidence, documentation, or even record purchases of illicit products if necessary to establish probable cause. We want to work in partnership with enforcement rather than at arms-length, and we have obvious incentives to do so, we just need a mechanism by which to engage. Second, rapid follow-up on reopenings. When unlicensed stores are shut down, there needs to be swift follow-up enforcement to ensure they remain closed. Businesses reopening days after being shuttered should be a top priority for immediate action. Licensees, again, are able to report these immediately if we can see follow-up action. Third, we need to strengthen the law of penalties regarding padlock removal. Current law regarding padlock removal from shuttered illegal cannabis retailers are clearly insufficient to deter reentry. According to conversations with the Manhattan District Attorney's Office, unless there's video evidence of someone physically moving the padlock, there's little that they can do to enforce against that. Even when there is evidence, the penalties are minimal, and owners of the establishments can just treat this as the cost of doing business. Fourth, we need to seize the profits of the illegal businesses. And again, in conversations with Manhattan DA's office, they indicated that seizing profits is going to be the only way to make a dent in the large operators, the more well-financed ones. I'm not talking about the bodegas and corner strip shops, but the well-financed ones have the resources and sophistication to avoid arrests, and if their profits are not seized, they will just drag this out and continue operating. Fifth, we need to restrict access to retail storefronts. Access to these storefronts is the lifeblood of the large illegal operators, so denying them access to the retail space is essential. Landlords need the power to easily evict illegal operators, and prosecutors need the power-
Your time has expired.
...to do so. And lastly, six, a right of private action. If enforcement resources remain as thin as they are, consider granting licensed businesses a proper right of action. And we are willing to take legal measures and take the fight directly to the unlicensed businesses if we are allowed to do so. Thank you again for the opportunity to testify, and I'm happy to answer follow-up questions and provide follow-up information as requested.
Thank you very much. The next one is Jacqueline Tellis.
You may begin.
Thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Jacqueline Tellis, and I am representing the New York Association of Wholesalers and Distributors. Today, I want to draw attention to the same critical issue that Mr. Hack brought to your attention a few minutes ago, and that is the illegal sale of untaxed cigarettes and flavored e-cigarettes in unlicensed stores throughout the New York City. Our sting operation, which we conducted a few years ago, revealed a reality that is, illegal cigarette trade is costing the city and the state of New York over $2.5 billion annually. Over the past 15 years, this amounts to a staggering loss of $37.5 billion. This is not just a financial issue, it is a crisis that demands urgent action. At the New York Association of Wholesalers and Distributors, we believe in maintaining a fair and free market where businesses can thrive based on merit and competition. However, the rapid sale of illegal cigarettes is eroding this foundation. It diverts potential profits from legitimate businesses, funds criminal activity, and undermines the rule of law. Through our revitalized First Alert program, we identified thousands of locations across the city suspected of selling illegal products. We gave this report to the city and state, and we are thrilled that the city is acting and closing down these stores. Our undercover operatives documented their findings, revealing that while some shops operate within the law, the majority do not. This illegal activity occurs in broad daylight, showcasing a blatant disregard for our laws. We need to finish the job and shut down all of these stores so the legal trade can take back the marketplace. When we shut down illegal stores, Consumer Affairs must open up the market to legal shops and terminate the moratorium on cigarette licenses because that policy defies logic. The city went from 10,000 cigarette licenses to less than 5,000, which hurts the legal distribution channels and enhances the legal channels. All cigarettes and vapor products should be bought in brick-and-mortar stores where we collect the taxes on these products. The consequences of this illicit trade are far-reaching. Not only are we losing billions in tax revenue, but we are also witnessing the rise of organized crime. Criminal enterprises are capitalizing on the high taxes in New York by smuggling cigarettes from states with lower taxes. This illicit market poses a significant danger to our public safety and national security. Revenue generated from illegal cigarette sales often funds violent groups and criminal organizations, contributing to a cycle of violence and instability. We are at a crossroads. Either we uphold our laws and restore integrity to our markets, or we allow these illegal operations to continue unchecked, further endangering our communities. We urge this council to take decisive action against the sale of illegal untaxed cigarettes and flavored e-cigarettes. By enforcing existing laws and imposing stringent penalties on violators, we can begin to reclaim the billions of dollars lost to this illegal marketplace. Let us work together to eliminate the scourge from our streets. Our mission is clear, to ensure-
Your time has expired.
-that every illegal cigarette is removed from our city, protecting both our economy and our communities. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you very much. We have now heard from everyone who was signed up to testify. If we inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify in person, please visit the sergeant's table and complete a slip. If we inadvertently missed anyone who would like to testify virtually, please use the raised hand function in Zoom, and a member of our staff will call on you in the order of hands raised. Anybody's hand raised? Nobody's hand is raised. I will now read the names of those who registered to testify but have not yet filled out a witness slip or appeared on Zoom, and they include Jide Rafe and David Schwartz. Is either person around? No. Seeing no one else, I would like to note again that written testimony, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to 72 hours after the close of this hearing by mailing it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. If there are no other comments, do you want to make a closing comment? I want to thank the great Justin Brandon for his leadership on this issue, and also the incredible staff. This is quite a report, a great hearing, lots of follow-up will be necessary, and I thank everyone who participated, testified, and all the amazing staff. Thank you.